Yeah, I'm ready.
Any cameras on?
Yep.
Cameras on? No, I don't think mine's on. Hang on. Yeah, it is. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the May 16th, 2023 Lawrence City Commission meeting. We will start our meeting tonight with an executive session.
I've moved to recess an executive session for approximately 25 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorney regarding Kansas statutes pursuant to KSA 7543-19B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-inclined privileged matters confidential at this time. The city commission will resume its regular meeting in the city commission room at approximately 5:26 after the executive session is concluded.
Second?
I have first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes four to zero.
Report, so we will reconvene at 5:45.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 16, 2023 Lawrence City Commission meeting. We will begin to tonight with a few words from Sheri on some instructions.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. If you are attending this meeting via Zoom, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat. All chats go directly to the meeting host. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, those attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. Those participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Participants will be called upon in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Sheri. We will start. We're on item B, which is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five to zero. The next item, C, which is our proclamations, we've got four this evening, and we're going to start off with the proclaim the month of May 2023 as neurofibromatosis awareness month and Wednesday, May 17, 2023, as World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day. I believe we've got somebody here to speak. Tan, yep, Tanda, Tandy?
My name is Tandy, and this is my friend Autumn and my son Leo behind me. Our families are here with us tonight as well. We want to thank Mayor Larson, the City Commission, and the Lawrence community for supporting our efforts to raise awareness about neurofibromatosis, a genetic condition that affects one in every two or 3,000 people. We call it the most common but rarely known disease, and chances are you have met someone with NF and just didn't know it. NF causes tumors to grow along nerves in the body. They are often benign but can be disfiguring and painful, and some can morph into a highly aggressive malignant form, which is often fatal. NF can also affect nearly every system of the body with issues such as blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, hypertension, cognitive delays, disabling pain, and of course, cancer. A silver lining is that NF research, because it affects all of these areas, can be applied to the general population. We all know someone with learning difficulties, high blood pressure, or cancer. No two cases of NF are ever the same, and families don't know which symptoms they will face, when they will occur, or how severe they will be. We watch and wait, visit numerous medical specialists throughout the year, and try desperately not to live in dreaded anticipation of what may come. Currently, there is no cure, but there is hope. With support from people like you and organizations like the Children's Tumor Foundation, we can help promote early diagnosis, the proper management of treatment, and support critical research for effective treatments and, one day, a cure. Neurofibromatosis is a hard word to say, but it can be much harder to live with. We invite you to wear blue and green tomorrow for World NF Awareness Day and to honor heroes like Autumn and Leo and so many others. Thank you.
Thank you, Tandy. I'll read the proclamation. So neurofibromatosis, also known as NF, type 1 affects 1 in 3,000 people or 2 million people worldwide, including citizens of Lawrence, Kansas, regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May 2023 as NF Awareness Month and May 17, 2023 as World NF Awareness Day to educate the public about this rarely known genetic disorder. And whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body and can affect nearly every system of the body with issues such as blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially support world-class medical research and development aimed at finding effective treatments and ultimately a cure for NF. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation provides critical support through its information resources and patient programs and work to improve access to quality patient health care through its National NF Clinic Network, of which Children's Mercy Hospital is a member. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 23 as NF Awareness Month and Wednesday, May 17, tomorrow, 2023, as World NF Awareness Day. And I encourage members of our community to learn more about NF by visiting ctf.org. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is proclaim June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we've got Leslie Milton.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Milton. I'm a Lawrence resident and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. We're a grassroots advocacy organization that promotes gun safety and common sense gun legislation. This evening, I'm here to thank you for issuing this proclamation declaring Friday, June 2, as Wear Orange Day. Wear orange and National Gun Violence Awareness Day were inspired by a group of Chicago teens who asked their classmates to commemorate the life of their friend, Hadia Pendleton, whose bright future was cut short by a random drive-by shooting. The first Wear Orange event took place on June 2 in 2015 on what would have been Hadia's 18th birthday. Orange is also the color that hunters wear to protect themselves in the woods. It denotes safety, and it's one of Hadia's favorite colors. Wear orange isn't about politics or the gun debate. It's about ending gun violence and saving lives. We invite everyone in Lawrence to commemorate National Gun Violence Awareness Day on Friday, June 2, by wearing orange around town and tying orange ribbons on trees in your home and in our community. On June 3, we will have our Wear Orange event in South Park, beginning at 1:00. This will be a visible reminder of our city's commitment to reducing gun violence. In doing so, we'll be joining hundreds of other cities across the country who will be hosting Wear Orange events to remember the lives of the more than 120 Americans killed by gun violence each day and the more than 200 who are shot and wounded. Gun violence has also now become the leading cause of death for our children and teens in the country. Thank you so much for supporting Wear Orange Day and for working to reduce gun violence.
Thank you, Leslie. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 17,000 gun homicides every year, making Americans 26 times more likely to die from gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Kansas has 456 gun deaths annually with a rate of about 15.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state of Kansas $5.7 billion each year and $95.1 million of which is paid by taxpayers. And whereas Kansas has the 21st highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange, a color chosen by Hadia's classmates because it is the color that symbolizes the value of human life as hunters wear it to announce themselves to other hunters when in the woods and in tribute to Hadia and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have National, let's see, proclaim March 14 through the 2023 as Police Week and Monday, May 15, as Police Officers Memorial Day. And I believe we have a few officers here. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. I want to thank you for this recognition and thank you for all the support that you provide to your police department and all the work that we do here in Lawrence. Tonight, I want to just give you a moment to be able to meet some of the officers that you don't always see, so I'm going to ask them to come up and introduce themselves before you read the proclamation.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Officer Garrett Welch. I've been on the force for approximately three years.
Thank you.
I'm Officer Maurice Henry. I've been on the force for four and a half years.
Sergeant Megan Shipley had been on the force for 10 years.
Officer Dustin Lister, been on the force for almost seven years now.
Officer Stephen Alvord, been here for eight years.
Hello, Sergeant Steve Verbanek. Been on the department for 28 years.
Major Trent McKinley, been with the department 32 years.
Anthony Rix, his deputy chief, 20 years.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank you for your service to our community and keeping us, working to keep us safe. Thank you. And I'll read the proclamation now. Established in 1962 by President John F. Kennedy in a joint resolution in Congress designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as a National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of the City of Lawrence, Kansas and Douglas County, Kansas plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens throughout the city and country. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, the hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Lawrence Police Department lost three officers in the line of duty. Officer Alan Moore, EOW 1901, Officer William Pringle, EOW 1909, and Officer Melvin Howell, EOW 1931. And whereas each May during the National Police Week, the nation pauses to recognize and honor the men and women of our law enforcement agencies who increasingly provide a high level of accountable, essential, and professional public service. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 14 through the 2023 as Police Week and Monday, May 15, 2023, as Police Officers Memorial Day. And I call upon all citizens of the City of Lawrence and Douglas County to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so, have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Thank you. And our final proclamation for this evening is to proclaim May 21 through the 27, 2023, as Public Works Week. I believe we have Melissa on Zoom. Melissa, Steven?
My entire elite crew with me tonight. We have my colleague, Deputy Director Trevor Flynn, Assistant Director, Melinda Hager, Assistant Director, and Angela Wazner, who is one of our general managers. And I believe there's a cadre of other MSO staff on here to celebrate with you.
All right. Is that, is that it? I'll go ahead and read. Yep.
Go ahead and read. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, whereas May 22 through the 27, 2023, has been declared as Public Works Week across the United States. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Lawrence, Kansas. And whereas public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, are responsible for building, maintaining, improving, and protecting our nation's vital transportation, water delivery, water and wastewater treatment, solid waste collection, public buildings, the city's fleet, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders and children in Lawrence to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of the public works in their community. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas this year, the City of Lawrence Municipal Services and Operations Department has fulfilled the compliance requirements for 33 chapters and 458 management practices and has achieved the elite status APWA accredited agency, one of only seven accredited agencies in Kansas and 180 accredited agencies across the United States and Canada. So now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby designate the week of May 21 through the 27 as National Public Works Week. And I urge all citizens to learn more about public works professionals and recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, our safety, and quality of life. Thank you. All right, we'll begin with, I should say, public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decision on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Hi, Hank. Hi.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. Something kind of brief, but what I think is really important.
Could you just give me your name, Hank? Your name?
Yes, Hank Guarisco.
You don't have to tell her your name.
Yeah, but I want to.
Come on.
The recent spraying of the Remnant Prairie next to Prairie Park Nature Center is a tragedy and represents two major failures of the Parks Department, both having serious consequences for the city and its citizens. The first failure was the killing of this prairie by broadcast spraying with an herbicide. The second failure was not posting notices of the spraying as required by regulations. Parks Department is responsible for many parks, open spaces, the golf courses, natural areas. This incident requires much more than a facile explanation and apology to quell the concerns of Lorenzians that these areas are being managed properly. How does the Parks Department manage these type of area? What are the regulations concerning the handling of toxic substances used in the course of its duties? How are these regulations communicated to the staff? Are proper notifications routinely posted in a timely manner to alert the public, or is it more of a haphazard affair? One individual who often visits the prairie remnant with his young daughter was rightfully alarmed at the lack of required notices. alarmed at the lack of required notices. If he or anyone else did visit the areas that had been recently sprayed, there were no posted notices as required, and he was exposed to these toxic substances, he would have grounds for a lawsuit. Therefore, I propose that the City Commission appoint an independent committee with appropriate expertise, appropriate expertise meaning including the potential adverse effects of herbicides on human health and the environment, with the appropriate expertise and the power to thoroughly investigate the activities of the Park Department. Only by complete transparency can these problems be solved and faith be restored in the Parks Department. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Other general public comment? Come on up. Hi.
My name is Daniel Lastman. I'm a professional restoration ecologist, restoring native landscapes of various types. And I'm also here to speak about what happened at Prairie Park and the partial destruction of the 8,000 to 9,000-year-old Remnant Prairie there. As some of you may know, on Saturday, the May 6th, there was a gathering there where people gathered to mourn the partial destruction of this prairie. We had a little over 222 people show, 220 people show up. And of those, 192 signed this petition, which I'll read to you all and give to you all. To the City Commission of Lawrence, Kansas, we are concerned that the current problems in the Lawrence Parks and Recreation Department go beyond individual missteps that led to the recent spraying of the Remnant Old Growth Prairie at Prairie Park Nature Center. The history of the department mismanaging native landscapes under its care needs to change. We believe management and staff can step up to the challenge of changing the current culture into one that values, nurtures and grows native landscapes. We request, number one, that there is a comprehensive native landscape management plan. In the long term, Parks and Rec must develop a comprehensive management plan for supporting native landscapes approved by community partners with ecological expertise that include monitoring, education and safeguards. Number two, there needs to be permanent and ongoing education on native landscapes within Lawrence Parks and Rec. Current management needs to adequately support, understand and educate employees on the benefit of native landscapes and how to manage them. And thirdly, we ask for a short-term moratorium on herbicide treatment of native plant landscapes. Not all city-managed landscapes, but simply ones where native plants constitute a large portion. Until a management plan is in place, we need a moratorium on herbicide treatment of any landscape with a prominent native plant's component, as any treatment of invasive species in the city limits should be reviewed and treated by spot application only. And on a personal, speaking solely for myself, I do think that considering, you know, the circumstances, it would be a good idea to, for there to be some kind of an investigation of this independent of the Lawrence Parks and Rec Department. Triclopiere, the active ingredient pasture guard, will only persist in terrestrial settings for about a day or so. But unless it's a certain type of application of it for wetlands is used, it will persist in water, in shaded water areas for up to 142 days. And so, this was put out there, this herbicide right before a large rainfall event, and a lot of that would have gone straight into Mary's Lake, which is stocked for fish. And Triclopiere has.
Time.
Yep.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you. Do you want to leave that? Did you want to leave that?
Yeah.
Another general public comment?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, hello, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hi, Steve.
And this is the first time I've been to a meeting since the pandemic lockdown. It's really nice.
Could you just say your name? Your name? Just give me your name, please.
Steve Braswell, 427 Michigan Street, a long-term resident of the Pinckney neighborhood. Even though we're losing our school, we're still Pinckney Panthers. And yeah, so it's nice to be able to talk to people in real life. And as a long-term resident, it gives me a chance to say, I'm really pleased with our current City Commission. And I've gone through lots of commissions. I'm really pleased how, I think you folks are really dealing with competing interests. Man, I tell you, competing interests, so many valid competing interests in our community. You guys are doing a fine job. However, I did write a letter to the editor about the Prairie Park incident. Lots of people are talking about it, so obviously it's a big community issue. And I wanted to come and talk. Letters to the editor limited to 250 words. And so, you got to parse it down. And I thought maybe my comments were maybe a little harsh. And looking at it again, I don't think so. But you got to be motivated. I got to be motivated to write. And so, part of my motivation is there's some chewing out that needs to be going on. And I did my part. So, moving on, writing my letter, I'm going on about follow the rules. And I'm thinking, well, do I know or not? And so, we don't have, I don't have all the facts, but when has stopped us from expressing our opinions? And so, to get where I'm going, the emphasis of my letter, I want to change it or push it differently. So, I've worked with this materials a long time and with some recognized experts in this field. They talk about people that wrote the book on it. I've worked with people that write the book on this stuff. And the big, big thing they did and surprised me is how much herbicide applied to ecological service, how much these restoration companies use herbicide. And the thing is, I think a lot of it is native plants, an aspect gets oversold. They've got good, they're good long-term maintenance, low maintenance, but you got to help them get established. The way you do that, you wipe out all their competition. And you do that by herbicide. So, these people are experts. They get awards. We're in constant contact with the equipment suppliers. And it's always, hey, we got a situation, what do we use? Or, hey, do we want to keep using the same thing? These people, these manufacturers, they are bear, these big farmers, they're pushing out new stuff all the time. So, we need to rely on these suppliers as experts.
Steve, your time's up. Sorry. Thank you.
And these people were experts.
Thank you, Steve.
They didn't think they'd do it all.
Thank you. Other general public comment?
Yeah, but look, all the money Craig saved. Got Prairie Park, you wanted to take it off the budget slash $300,000. Kill it. That's an easy way to get it off the budget. Courtney Shipley thinks it's appropriate to send emails to written public comment. She also thinks it's appropriate to call Citizen Sun in a meeting. I'm going to urge everybody to vote against Courtney Shipley because she doesn't deserve to be up there with that kind of attitude. Your police review board is floundered. It's because of the control of your chief over here. I don't think there's anything else to say there. He controls it. Why bother? And you guys are letting it happen. Little bit of English. That's a dais, not a stage. We're the public, not an audience.
Point of order. Mayor, can we make sure that those who are providing public comment, that it's related to the business of the City Commission?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And how am I not related to the business of the City Commission? Why are you interrupting my public comment with a point of order that makes no sense?
Point of order is interrupting questions.
Stop the time, please. She's called a point of order.
Point of order.
I need clarification on this point of order. How is it that I'm supposed to proceed if I can't speak? Explain, please.
Just keep it to the business of the Commission.
Ma'am, I would like an explanation of how I wasn't in the business of the Commission. She called a point of order and interrupted my public comment and says, and expresses some kind of desire that I'm out of order somehow. I would like to know how that is. I haven't cussed once. I haven't even raised. Please explain, Mayor. It's your board. Please explain.
Commissioner Sellers, do you have any thoughts? And what the?
On my point of order?
Yeah.
Well, as a member of the governing body, the point of order is an interrupting motion to speak to the germane of one's public comments. Comments in regards to whether someone is running for commission is not the business of this body, and it's not germane to the business of this commission. Neither is any definition or defined term.
This is public comment.
Excuse me, sir. I am interrupting. Point of order. Point of order. If public comment, if commentees cannot maintain, providing comments that are germane to the business of this governing body, then they need to either be silenced or removed.
Okay.
Oh.
So, that's where we're at, Michael. Just keep it to the business of the Commission.
So, the business of the Commission. I hope everybody just witnessed what happened here. That's interesting. The business of the Commission. I don't particularly think the business, the Commission really has any business. You guys haven't shown much leadership. Your homeless division out there is failing. The gentleman from Pinckney needs to understand that when that homeless thing gets put in your neighborhood, you're going to have constant police traffic up and down Michigan Street all day long. And the reason is, is because the HID staff fails repeatedly. They don't take care of that camp properly. You have residents in that camp now who are the police out there and who are managing things by manipulation and intimidation. You have people getting assaulted and police officers refusing to take a report, apparently, from what I'm understanding. You know, I could be way more out of order and still be within my First Amendment right, Ms. Sellers. You need to understand that I have yet to express the full extent of the First Amendment in this room or out there on the streets. And I am going to be playing a role in this election, and I'll speak to it.
Point of order.
As a part of the city's business.
Michael, keep it to the business of the Commission.
And I'll speak to this as a part of the city's business.
Point of order.
Anytime.
Point of order.
I choose.
Point of order.
Next.
Time.
Next.
She called a point of order before my time expired. We're not done yet.
Michael, you're done. We're done.
I'm calling a point of order.
Michael, you're out of order.
I can't.
Michael, Officer, would you please remove Mr. Ervey?
Officer, remove me? Are you kidding?
Casey.
So, since I'm being removed, your appointment to the police review board work group is on record supporting.
Point of order.
It is biased police.
Point of order.
Recording, and it will be made.
Point of order.
Thank you, Mayor.
Point of order.
Any other public comment? General public comment on items that are not on the agenda? If not, go to Zoom.
Stephen Watts.
First, I'd like to have an understanding why I wasn't allowed to give information about the proclamations given, please. Oh, there's a lot of stuff flashing on my screen that the Playboy is giving instead of, oh, there's a pretty Steve. Mayor Larson, why wasn't I allowed to talk about the proclamations you gave?
We don't have public comment on proclamations, nor are we required to.
Since when? What do you mean? What do you mean required to? It's our town. You can do whatever the hell you want. You mean, you don't want to hear? It's okay. Tell me you don't want to hear first, and then I'll proceed because I have some other things to talk about.
Proceed.
So, you don't care about the public comment on your proclamations? Is that what I'm hearing you say, ma'am?
You heard me.
All right then. Hey, relative to the proclamation about anti-guns, I got to say, I'm all for it on the other side of the coin.
You're out of order. That's an item that's on the agenda?
No, ma'am. I'm talking about your proclamation.
And that's an item that's on the agenda? You're out of order? One more.
No, I'm not out of order. This is one of your proclamations. I'm talking about it.
Casey, would you please remove Mr. Watts?
What? I can't talk.
Remove him from the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Any other general public comment on items that are not on the agenda from Zoom?
No.
Okay. We're going to bring it back up here. Thank you very much for your patience. You will move agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items that a member of the Commission would like to pull? Nope. Any member of the audience would like to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor Larson, we would ask that item E8A, the dedication of easements for fountain addition number one, be pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any other items? Anybody on Zoom?
Just one second, Mayor. Somebody just joined, so I want to make sure that's not live here. No.
All right. We'll bring it back to the Commission, and I'll ask for a motion.
Go ahead.
Then I started to cough, and I couldn't do it. Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of E8A.
Second.
I got a first and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. It passes five to zero. We will start with E8A. Rick? Rick, come on up. Rick, come on up. Talk about it.
No waiting?
No waiting.
No. You're first in line.
Don't jinx yourself.
Mayor Larson, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Rick Hurd. I'm an attorney here in Lawrence with the Pete Fish Law Firm, and I represent the First Presbyterian Church, which is located directly across the street to the east from the property that is subject to this dedication of easements. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is a nine-acre parcel. The site plan that was submitted for the project there calls for one lot with 57 duplexes and six detached dwellings on one lot. My client objected to the approval of the site plan before the City Commission. You all approved it on a three-to-two vote, and then we appealed to the District Court. The District Court agreed with the interpretation of the city and the developer with regard to the definition of what a duplex is and whether a duplex is required to be on a separate lot. The District Court found that the interpretation offered by the city and the developer was correct and ruled against the church and dismissed the lawsuit. We appealed to the Kansas Court of Appeals, and on March 24th, the Kansas Court of Appeals issued a memorandum decision reversing the District Court and sending the case back for further considerations. The directions from the Kansas Court of Appeal were to consider the legislative history and for the court to make a determination of the legislative intent of the ordinance in question. This is information that's not included in your packet, and I thought it should be brought to your attention. This morning, I filed a petition, a motion in the District Court on behalf of the church for an injunction to stop the project while the District Court takes evidence and hears testimony about the legislative intent of the ordinance. The church, we filed today on behalf of the church. Neither the city nor the developer have had any opportunity to respond to that. The court has not issued an injunction yet, but I wanted to advise you that I did file the motion this morning. So, what's before you today is a dedication of easements and a replat into one lot. So what's before you today is a dedication of easements and a replat into one lot. It seems like it's disjointed or separate from the issue of the site plan approval, but it's really not. If you look at the dedication of easements, it's the footprint of the project submitted under the site plan, and that site plan has not yet been found to be legal. That's the issue before the District Court. All I'm asking is for you to defer this item...
Time.
Until...
Thank you, Rick. Your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from staff on this?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Tony Wheeler, the city attorney. The item tonight is for the acceptance by the City Commission of easements proposed to be dedicated with the minor subdivision. Those easements include utility and access easements, pedestrian easements, and tree preservation easement. Minor subdivisions are a ministerial process in which staff reviews for compliance with the subdivision regulations. If the plat is found to meet those requirements, it is approved. Minor subdivisions are not approved by the commission. However, the commission does have a role by accepting dedications of easements and rights away. That's why it's before you this evening. The planning staff did confer with our office before placing this matter on the agenda, and we advised that it was fine to proceed. There is no order or temporary stay that would prohibit the City Commission taking this action, and as Mr. Hurd said tonight, there is no court order in place that would prohibit you from taking the action, and we do not see a need at this time to defer it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Sign them. Nope, then we will open it up to public comment. Any public comment?
See on our Plan, Plan Engineering, where the author of the final plat that you have before you. Just to let you understand, we've also done all the public improvement plans, which were approved back in November. During this whole process, we've moved on to lock in those public improvement plans, the approval as part of your process, approval of the final plat. There's a timeline here, and it's pretty important. If we never get that final plat approved, those public improvement plans don't get approved, neither the site plan. But the site plan also has a time limit. I don't think anybody's talked about that, but all that stuff that has time limits, I'm not sure how the season will look at it, but we don't need to go backwards. If we don't get this approved, the final, the public improvement plans, we have to go back, re-review those with the engineering staff, who took, you know, several reviews, and that was your time. That's the city's time. So we'd like this final plat to go ahead and be approved, file another, dedicate some completely, but at least we have your approval of this final plat. So I'm asking you to go ahead and approve it tonight, and we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item?
My name is Jim Rumsey. I'm a member of the Board of Elders of First Presbyterian Church. The real question in this is, why do we need to go forward at this point? There's a serious question as to whether or not the definition promoted by the city attorney's office and this planning staff of duplex in an ROS zoning property was, in fact, legal. Why is it necessary for it to go forward? Why can't it just be deferred? It seems the practical solution to this problem is simply letting it be deferred until the court case can be resolved. I think it is important that this wasn't mentioned in the agenda item report that you were provided, and the Court of Appeals makes it pretty clear that the question of what is a duplex in ROS zoning is a ambiguous term that the court has to determine with the rules of law that are provided for that. We're asking that this be deferred.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jane Eldridge. I live in the Springwood Heights addition, which is immediately west of this property. I want to talk to you a little bit about the ethics of this property, not the legal issues. I'll leave those for the lawyers. I'm no longer one of them. I first encountered this property in 2017 when Gilbane came to town because they develop high-end luxury apartments for students. There are other such developers who have looked at Lawrence. When Gilbane came to town, they went to the Planning Commission. They wanted to change the zoning from RSO to a multifamily district. The Planning Commission, on a 9-0 commission vote, said, "No, you're not going to do that in our community, not on this piece of property." So the City Commission didn't see it, other than those of you who participated in one way or another in the Gilbane encounter. Now Fountain Partners, another high-end student housing developer, wants to essentially have the same kind of use for this property. Gilbane was proposing 600 residents. Fountain is proposing something over 300 residents. They both are all on one lot. They both are going to be owned by out-of-state companies. Neither one of them provided ways for individuals to actually have what we think of as duplexes. In Lawrence, we think of those as family units that have access to roads immediately from their driveways. They don't just have one big parking area, as you see on the site plan, that everybody has to combine. They don't have clubhouses. They don't have pools. So it seems very appropriate to wait until you have the legal answers before you move forward with doing anything that either promotes or implies approval of a site plan that has not yet been validated. And in moving forward with this, with an illegal, at this point, site plan, you are putting yourselves in the position of having to justify why you would dedicate any easements or move forward with any kind of development. So please defer. It's the most reasonable, ethical thing to do.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Jane. Officer McKinley, please come in. Mr. Watts has entered the room, and he was removing from the... Sorry, Jane. Let's do a five-minute recess, okay? Sorry, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, we're back, and I apologize for the interruption. Jane, you want to come back up and...
And I'm sorry I had to reset your time just for the executive session, but I think you have about a minute and a half left, okay?
I'm almost done. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I think the reasonable and responsible thing to do is to defer this. The vote on the site plan initially was a close one. It was a three-two. I think that it was not easy for anybody that evening, and we certainly count on you to allow for all of the facts to be developed, to solve the legal issues, and then move forward when it's appropriate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jane. Other public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Larson. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Travis Herrod. I'm the president of the Springwood Heights Neighborhood Association that sits directly to the west of the 2300 Crestline Project. It's my privilege to be here tonight to represent not only Springwood Heights, but also, I have neighbors from the Hills West Town Homes Association, and I have both here and over there. Then we also have Kenny Prost, who's the owner, or one of the owners, of the Lawrence Child Development Center. And so, along with the representatives of First Presbyterian Church, that's everybody. The only other property that abuts this issue is Clinton Parkway, which is you guys. So the neighbors, whether it be the business owners, whether it be the church, whether it be the people living next to this, we simply ask you to just push pause and defer this particular agenda item tonight. We believe that these things are still being worked out in the District Court. We still think that there's some road left to travel, and it's important to us. And so we simply ask for your deferment and just a pause tonight. I don't think it costs you anything. And aside of that, I am deeply appreciative of your service tonight. I really do. Thank you.
Other public comment on this item? If not, we'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there any interest in deferring this item tonight?
How long till a site plan expires?
Good evening, Commissioners. I can answer that for you. I can cover with planning. The site plan expiration... The site plan would expire if they had not pulled building permits by November 9th of this year. They can also ask for a 24-month extension on that site plan approval. That would come back to you for consideration on that extension.
Okay. Any interest? I would be interested.
Tony, I want to make sure. While the appeals court kicked it back down to the District Court to review legislative intent, that intent doesn't necessarily speak to the process, which is what we're looking at with the dedication of the easement. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. The Court of Appeals felt that the District Court would benefit from having more information before it regarding definitions in the Development Code. So the Court of Appeals remanded it back to the District Court and asked for more information to be provided to the court to determine, you know, which definition was appropriate. Tonight's action, again, it has to do with accepting easements. The litigation has to do with the site plan, and again, the action that's being taken tonight is really a ministerial, ministerial action. I don't know how to say it any other way. I think Jeff and Becky are on the call as well if they want to supplement my answer, but...
Any other discussion on this? I don't think we got the interest in the deferral at this point. It doesn't seem like it. Deferral?
I would discuss that. I understand that. I understand the point that you're making. I understand the point that staff is making about it being ministerial also. They ask our opinion for a reason, and this is one of those opportunities.
Okay.
I was just asking my question for understanding, since I wasn't one of those three or two votes, so...
That's right, yeah.
So I mean, I understand the context, and I did follow this prior to joining, being sworn in on the commission, and I think that was one of the reasons why I wanted to ask how the two intertwined with each other and whether or not there was an impact, so... I'm not against the discussion of deferral. I think it's just those who would want it would carry the motion, and so...
I do also, just for clarity's sake, I also understand that even if this passes, and... and ultimately the plan fails because of legal action, nothing happens, right?
And I guess I would add that, I mean, as Mr. Hurd said, he is, I mean, they filed a motion to stay the entire process. And, you know, either the judge is going to grant that, and that's going to stay the process no matter what we do tonight, or the judge is going to deny that. And then, we've effectively granted a stay on something the judge denied granting the stay on. So, I'd just as well leave it in the hands of the judge to make that decision. We've had the vote, and it's in front of the court, and so we'll let the court make that determination.
I would probably agree. I mean, since the judge still has to decide what to do in this case.
Commissioner Sellers, your thoughts?
I shared my thoughts earlier. I feel like if I talked more than I should, then I'd end up coughing, so that might be a blessing for y'all tonight.
Not a motion?
I'll move to accept the dedication easements as shown on the drawing of Fountain Edition 1, minor subdivision M 22, 420, located on 2300 Crestline Drive.
I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Passes three to two. Okay, we're on to item G. Let everybody get out of the room. You good? Are we good?
Sorry, Mary. You were referring to us. We couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will speak up louder. It's a bad part of the room. Okay, I'm going to, so we're on to item G, the work session. The work session provides an opportunity for the City Commission to discuss items in greater detail. The Commission will take no binding action on items presented during this time. Work session topics are eligible for live public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on a work session item will be limited to three minutes for comments. Tonight, we're to receive the strategic plan update from the Safe and Secure Outcome Team, our police department.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission, thanks for having us. We've got an update for you tonight on our accreditation process. You'll get to hear from me, very little, a lot from Brooke and from Anthony, which is a good thing because I got, I have what Commissioner Sellers has. My sinuses are killing me, and so I'm going to try and talk very quickly here, so. Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence and leadership, resource management, and service delivery. You should have a packet that gives you this little flyer that talks about some of the benefits of accreditation, specifically the Kalia accreditation process we're going through. There are currently 12 accredited agencies in Kansas and additional four enrolled in the self-assessment phase, including us. A few of the accredited agencies include the Kansas Highway Patrol, Overland Park Police Department, Kansas City, and Topeka Police Departments. These are the five safe and secure strategies that tie into the law enforcement and the accreditation process. So, we're hitting all of those: community engagement, efficient effective processes, equity and inclusion, sound fiscal stewardship, engagement in power teams. The accreditation process is one that involves input from community during the assessment phase and then provides an enduring forum for their participation. Citizens will have access to standard complaint policies and the documentation that affirms our compliance, or compliant policies, I apologize. This conduit for accountability and transparency is a major benefit of accreditation. So, when we do that self-assessment, that'll come up just before we get our accreditation, so probably in about a year or so. They will ask for community feedback about our organization, and they'll be, our community will be able to provide that feedback, and that's a really important part of their assessment of your agency, and it's compliant with their standard, compliance with their standards. The foundation of accreditation, foundations of accreditation are the professional standards that are set forth by and updated by a diverse National Commission of Law Enforcement and Public Representatives. Standards are continuously evolving as best practices and new legislation develop. To become accredited, we must not only comply with the 180 law enforcement standards, but continuously improve our compliance, evidence through documentation. Again, this is one of the benefits of the Kalia process is we have to have a policy that meets their standard, but then we also have to document how we met all 180 of those standards. So, it's not good enough to say we've got a policy. It's not good enough to take my word saying we're doing it. We've got to actually show it. So, this takes me back to my Missouri days, the Show Me State. We're going to show our community how we're doing and meeting all 180 of those standards. Many of the standards required by Kalia relate to issues of equity and inclusion in law enforcement. Some of them include requirements of policies with recurrent training, while others involve procedures and reporting. These are just a few of the specific issues tied to that strategy. Things like ethics and conduct, biased policing, duty to intervene, use of force. These are all things that we already meet today, but they are things that we will prove as we go through the Kalia process to our community, to you, to everyone else, that we meet those standards and that we're doing them every day. Becoming an accredited agency comes with a host of financial benefits, including a stronger defense against civil lawsuits and the potential for a reduction in liability insurance costs. Additionally, we are eligible for federal grant funds to support accreditation and activities that facilitate compliance. You'll get to meet Brooke, our accreditation manager. She successfully wrote and you all accepted a grant to help us with this accreditation process, and we look forward to getting some more of those as we go through this, becoming an accredited agency. Our goal to ensure that accreditation is a meaningful initiative for our community and our agency has motivated us to establish an accreditation unit that engages staff across departments and rank. And I might point out that there are some other city departments that are already accredited. They also have accreditation managers, and they are all working together to help each other through these accreditation processes. So, I think it's a great example of how we're working cross-department with other accreditation managers in MSO Parks and Fire. Yeah, I forgot about the Fire guys. Sorry. Sorry, Rich. The unit is an instrumental asset to promote and educate staff and the public on our accreditation efforts and the multitude of benefits that it offers our community. I'm now going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Anthony Brixius, who will introduce you to our accreditation team.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor and Commissioners. One of the things, I've been tasked with leading this project, although admittedly, without the leadership of people like Major Cooper and Brooke, there'd be no way that we're this far in the process already. One of the things that we wanted to do and that we've been successful with at other projects is really get a lot of people involved in the department. So, we've taken experts from different areas, whether it be use of force, or whether it be evidence, or whether it be firearms, and we've given them some tasks that were within their own area to find out if we're compliant and then help us show later on if we're doing all the right things. So, in the midst of this, once we had established that we wanted to be a Kalia agency, the University of Kansas and the Kansas Law Enforcement, excuse me, the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center with the University of Kansas introduced the CLEEP program. So, it's the Kansas Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And so, we had the opportunity to go to one of their trainings, and they really wanted us to be involved in the process as one of the bigger agencies in Kansas. We found that they had a great deal of information in their accreditation process and that they were really, really well-suited to help provide us with some tools and that we also could take a leadership role in this program, and that's what we've done so far. So, we decided, and you'll kind of hear me walk this back in a minute, we decided that we were going to do two accreditations at one time. And if anybody's ever taken upon the task of accreditation, they know it's a tremendous task, but we thought that we could try to do both at the same time. So, as we went through this and we started looking at the standards, a couple of us, Major Cooper and myself, were trained to become assessors in this program. So, we were taught to see what an assessor is going to see of whether it's valid. And these two programs are really actually very similar in what they want. A standard may have just a tweak on language or something like that. And the way I could best explain it, and I explained it with my wife, is if we're both doing laundry and you fold a shirt one way and I fold a shirt the other way, we've both got the task accomplished of folding shirts, but someone who's looking at that may not want it folded a certain way. And that's exactly what we found in this process, and so we've decided ultimately that we are going to go with the national standard, the Kalia program, and obtain reciprocity through CLEEP, but we are heavily involved in the CLEEP process right now. As Chief mentioned, Brooke wrote a really outstanding grant. We received about $110,000 in Kalia award money. That's helping us with training. That's helped us with computer systems, things to set up our program. We're going to probably go to some other Kalia agencies and learn from them, so it's been really, really great. That grant's going to provide us with a lot of opportunities. Brooke is one of the leaders in the Kalia Accreditation Coalition Leadership here in Kansas. She may get the chance to talk about that a little bit. And then, in CLEEP, Major Casey Cooper is on the leadership board of that, and then Major Cooper and I have been trained and tasked to be lead assessors in the state. So, it's a really great program. It's just a little bit different than Kalia, and we're happy to be taking part in both of them. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brooke.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, and hello to everyone. Thank you for having me. This is my first time presenting for all of you, so just, you know, take it easy on me, and hello to my children watching on Zoom. So, sometimes when I talk about my job and about accreditation, people look confused or blank or bored because they have no idea what accreditation is. So, I'm really excited and grateful to have this opportunity to talk about it a little more in detail so you can see how valuable it is to our community and how well it ties into the strategic plan. You'll see our timeline starts in spring 2020. That's when I came on board, and we officially enrolled with Kalia in November. So, we have approximately 24 to 36 months from the time of getting self-assessment to get all the way through it, and I'm going to go a little bit more in detail what those processes look like. So, bringing us here today, spring 2023, we are about 50% of the way through the written directive development, which I'll also explain a little bit more about. So, a big overview for everyone of the accreditation process. Once you have enrolled, you begin, as I said, the self-assessment process. That leads and prepares you for the official assessment. After the award, there is a continual re-accreditation process. Once we're awarded, we'll submit updated annual proofs to maintain our accreditation. We'll make modifications in response to changing standards. We'll provide agency data, and then in the fourth year, we'll get to go through the full assessment for re-accreditation all over again. So, this is the entire self-assessment phase. It's what, the meat of what we're doing to come into compliance with the national standards. There are essentially these five steps, beginning with the gap analysis, which informs policy development. Then we're going to generate those proofs of compliance, organize all that documentation and proofs, and maintain in a online policy management software system that's required by Kalia. And then, once we have all of these steps completed, we'll have our state partners help us to prepare by conducting a mock assessment. So, the basics, we've talked about 180 standards. They may or may not all be completely applicable. For example, if we don't maintain our own jail, some of those standards may not apply to us. But each standard has an identification number, and it has a course statement. That course statement, we must abide by every letter to the T. And then there's additional commentary that kind of informs and provides details and examples, but isn't necessarily binding. Here's an example of a pretty easy, straightforward example. You see our code of ethics here. So, for example, in this statement, it's saying that this training has to be conducted for all personnel, whereas another might require only sworn personnel. But in this one, we must do all, and it must be done at minimum biannually. So, once a year, we'll not cut it for compliance. There's different types of standards. Some of them are just simple like that, a written directive. Others will have a full policy plan or procedure that needs to be completed. Some of them are linked to other standards. Some of them have multiple, multiple bullets, and each one of those must be abided by. Some of them are conditional. Some can be affirmed by observation, and some are time-sensitive. So, if we have to start doing a new process, we have to do it quarterly or biannually, we have to start doing it so we can document it because we have to keep those proofs according to the number that they say. I just wanted to show you, I know you can't read all of this, but this is an example of a multi-component standard. So, you can see A through F. All of those particular sentences are required, and then we have to show through our documentation each one of those bullets and highlight it and show this meets this bullet. So, the gap analysis is exactly what it sounds like. We're trying to find the gaps between what we're currently doing and what we need to do in order to come into compliance. Our wonderful accreditation unit conducted this as a team over a five-month period, and I have to say, I'm very lucky because I have met other agencies that are doing this process, and they do not have this kind of collaboration and support behind it. So, I know that I am a very lucky accreditation manager. We used a defined process to evaluate. We looked at all of our policies, our written directives from LPD, and some of them extending into city policies as well. We identified where those gaps were and then provided recommendations to remedy them. This is what one of our policies look like, an LPD policy. Now that we've completed the gap analysis, we've moved on to developing and modifying these policies to ensure that each of the written directives and the standards are there. Some of them might need a tweak, a word. A few of them are just fine as they are. Some of them are small standards, but they kind of just add up with those little tweaks. We've incorporated a new header at the top of this document, and that's going to provide reference to standards and states when it was approved and by whom, which is also a Kalia requirement. When it comes to proofs, there's lots of different options, lots of different documents that can serve as a proof. It could be anything from a police report, video. It can even be an email or a memo. So, lots of different documentation, but it's going to be different based on the standard. After we've gone through all of that fun stuff, we're going to take all that documentation, and we are going to upload it into the Power DMS software system. And so, when it comes for the file review process, the Kalia assessors will be accessing this in order to look at all of our files and make sure that they are compliant. So, moving forward, this is our projected timeline. Next steps, we're going to finish the rest of our policy modifications, do our proofs, files, mock assessment, and we anticipate that occurring, our official evaluation in fall of 2024. That is our stretch goal. We do have an additional 12 months if we need to extend the timeline. And this is a snapshot of our internal spreadsheet we are using to track our progress. We can kind of see our status by chapter and quantify how far we are into the current phase and use the data to provide updates to all of you good people. And this is an Excel spreadsheet that I created. It's, contact me if you want any pro bono Excel support. And that is the end of our presentation. Thank you very much for having us, and if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I've got one. I noticed on that last slide before thank you, there was a dashboard option for a dashboard. Is that where a community can access that to look at it?
This is an internal spreadsheet. It's just an Excel document, so it's something that we are going to take a snapshot of and put into the, I think, City Manager's Report? Is that quarterly? Yes. So, we'll be providing updates, a snapshot of that dashboard so you can see how it moves. And as we move through the phases, this dashboard will also change based on where we are in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Brooke, did I gather, did you've done this before? You've worked with other agencies on Kalia, or?
I have a background in policy, and I have worked in nonprofit management as well. So, this is my first foray into law enforcement, other than a few bargaining tickets. But yes, this is my first time working for law enforcement, and it is wonderful. I like it.
I mentioned this before, my wife led her agency through an accreditation project two years ago, so I know the amount of work that it takes and appreciate the, what you're doing and... you're doing and, and the dashboards. And she spent a lot of time with Power DMS, so I understand how that.
Very good. We'll have to call her up then.
Yes. So appreciate your work, all, all of your work on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Cohen. Um, as you complete your policy modifications, um, how will you, uh, present those to us? Cause obviously that's gonna be a somewhat of a gradual process. You don't wanna send us a memo for every little thing you change, but I'm sure we all will be interested in what those changes are. So how will that look to us?
So my understanding is as we, um, release our policy changes, they go through our policy acknowledgement software, which is called LexiPoll. And we're not gonna do it all at once because we don't wanna overwhelm everyone. Um, and we're gonna do it, um, when it makes sense to do it. So the entire policy, uh, manual, is that available to the city commission? How do they access that?
Yeah, it's, as of right now, it's available. We update it every six months. But one of the things that this is going to do is we're gonna move to Power DMS, which has a outward facing system. And so as we change our policy, it will, someone, someone can access it through the city's website.
Other questions?
Um, yeah, I was just looking, thank you very much, both of you, for the presentation. Um, I was just looking at the, uh, end time of fall 2024 of the CLIA evaluation. Is that also the end time of the CLIP, uh, process as well? I know that we're doing that like simultaneously.
So we are going through all of the steps of CLIP. We're using their resources and their tools, going to their trainings and using them as technical assistance, um, expertise. Uh, but once we have completed the CLIA assessments, we just present that to CLIP and they will retroactively give us our state level accreditation as well, which they've already done to a few agencies who've started off, but there's only about a dozen of us beta testers in progress. So we're helping them kind of figure out their very initial cohort.
Thank you.
So I got, I got one more question. So as we go through this process and we get our accreditation, how will this make us a better department?
It's a very good question. The transparency, the commitment to best practices, every time there is a new law that changes, uh, the CLIA commission meets, uh, three times a year and they are continuously looking at the standards. Um, other agencies will make suggestions of new standards or changes to standards. And as we evolve as a society and as an agency, we are staying on top of those best practices and on those legislative, um, alterations. And so that is a requirement. Once those things change, I think we have six months for our operations to come into compliance with that. Not only that, we have to prove that we're doing that. We have to document that we're doing that. And there is a conduit of communication between the public and us and CLIA. And it really puts it out there in the open. And once we have our, uh, public-facing software, it's gonna be even more transparent.
CLIA is considered the gold standard in accreditation. So for us, we're getting the very best. We're gonna have, make sure our policies are the best. We'll make sure that all of our practices are the best and we'll be able to prove that. But that's just one part of this overall strategy of making ourselves the very best police department for our community. So we're, we're, we're not gonna rest on this. We're gonna continue to do the other work that we've been doing, listening to our community, getting feedback from them, being transparent with them. This just kind of gives us that sort of icing on the cake in this one area with policy development and proving that we're following our policies.
Well, so what training is going to occur with officers, um, on this?
Many of the standards require training and they require recurring training, whether it's annually or biannually. So it depends on the standard and on the topic. If it's related to use of force or, uh, physical equipment, um, all of that has to be documented and it has to be done continuously. So for a year, we will have to show, you know, two times during that year, evidence that we did that. And we will have to do that for every year, collecting them as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. Any other questions? If not, we will open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this item? How about on Zoom?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, Jeremy Roth-Cachell.
Uh, thank you. How convenient, uh, that the city commission had agitated, uh, enough to disrupt the serious members of the public who have been providing actual public oversight of the Lawrence Police Department for many years, uh, and having gotten them out of the way before we could actually talk about this based on pretext and obvious fraud of the democratic process. Meanwhile, you kicked out Stephen Watts. He is actually, uh, your local expert on, on LexiPoll.
Jeremy, Jeremy, you're out of order and, um, we need to, to talk about what is on the agenda right now.
I am talking about what's on the agenda right now. I'm talking about the absence of voices that should be there to talk about that. I want reclaim my time. I wanna start over and I will talk on my matter now then. I will reclaim my time. Give me three minutes and I will, I will start on my matter.
So this is a warning.
Not a proper point of order.
Jeremy, this is a, this is a warning and if you don't stick to the subject, we're going to remove you.
The subject was the topic of, of our police department and public oversight in relationship to, uh, professional practice. That's what I was speaking to. Reclaim, I reclaim my time. That was an improper point of order. I will speak directly to my.
Your time has been reclaimed, Jeremy. Start speaking.
All right, thank you. Um, first of all, LexiPoll, as I pointed out, you kicked out your local expert on LexiPoll. LexiPoll is not a best practices, uh, handbook for actual police conduct. It is a police union-friendly and, and police legal-friendly. And the question is, who is meant to be safe and secure here? I will remind folks that we just in the last month had a major scandal out of the highest levels of police unions in California where LexiPoll comes from. We had the, basically the head, I think it was the San Jose Police Union, who is running the fentanyl operations in the community over there. Now, I hope that we don't have that going on here, but we do know that the police union in Lawrence led the way in, in outing our, our last police chief, our African-American police chief, and we, the public, still don't know why that happened. Okay, you also kicked out, uh, the, the key, uh, member of the public who has done oversight on police misconduct and the passing around of bad officers who have had their accreditation taken away from them when it was actually properly adjudicated. And you, they've also paid attention to the, the, the problems of the complaint process. And the mayor herself has put on the, the so-called, uh, police review board, people who want to remove standing from we, the people in terms of how we can make actual complaints. And finally, on my own behalf, I am still very concerned about where we, the people in Lawrence stand in terms of the Lawrence Police Department using an apartheid state's Israeli military intelligence technology such as Celebrite or BriefCam in terms of video analytics. I think we need to fully divest from any foreign military intelligence software. And I want some feedback on where the commission and the police leadership stands on that. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Not, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any thoughts? Thoughts? Geez, please. Yeah, I'm still coughing. Any thoughts?
Uh, just a quick one. Thank you guys for your presentation. Um, I look forward to, um, the accreditation process and finishing it up. Uh, it's, uh, it sounds like it's gonna be quite rigorous and ongoing, uh, which is great. And I really like the transparence, transparency aspect of it. I think that can only help us going forward. So I thank you for all your efforts and continuing efforts of getting us on this, on this path.
Brooke, I think if I talk slow, I won't, I can be able to go get through this and not cough. Remind me of getting your presentation, what you said about LexiPoll, cause I thought I heard you say that we would be pulling, transitioning from that. Did I mishear you in regard to that piece? Come on, come on up to the, Brooke, come on up to the. Cute shoes, by the way.
Brooke Miller, Lawrence Police Department. Uh, yes, so, um, and I'm still somewhat new, but, uh, my understanding of the way that we use, uh, LexiPoll, um, is we use it to store our policies, um, a way to organize and communicate our policies. So when we change one, it pushes it out to all the officers so they can actually see it and acknowledge it. Um, and it provides us, you know, it's, you don't wanna just write your policies down on a, you know, sticky note. So, um, there is a, uh, aspect of Power DMS that will allow us to upload all of the policies and that will turn and be a, a website that the public can access.
So Power DMS gives us a better product than LexiPoll? And so we're transitioning from?
I don't.
Oh, I. Go ahead.
So to answer your first question, we're not going away from LexiPoll. What we're talking about is what is the outward facing? Right now, LexiPoll basically gives a PDF, right? Our DMS is, um, it'll be individualized policy, uh, that you can see. But LexiPoll is still our main policy provider. And when I say that, I say it somewhat loosely. Like when we, let's say we have a use of force policy. Look at it, make sure it meets Kansas standards, that it meets our practices. The city attorney's office looks at it. And then we have the ability to do some modification to it, right? That still remains in place. LexiPoll then provides training on your own policy, things like that. So we are staying with LexiPoll. Power DMS is not its own policy entity. It's just a place to store it.
Okay. So it's not necessarily duplication of effort between the two?
No.
Okay. So LexiPoll, right? You know what? Point of order. Come on. Please remove Mr. Russia. That's my recommendation. Casey, please remove him. He had a warning. Continue. So my question was on LexiPoll. So we get the policies from them? We access policies that they've already written?
So we get a baseline policy.
Baseline.
You have a policy on use of force. They look at your state and they take state law into it and they give you what they would consider a model policy. It'll tell you if it's best practice or if at certain point you put agency content, things like that. You have the ability to modify it based on your procedure. Okay? So, um, one of the things that you saw is the CLIA tags in there. That is Major Cooper and I going in and modifying all the, all the little pieces of it. Um, and so after, after you've modified it, you typically, if it's something like use of force, that'd be something that we would do with the city attorney's office. And they would say, yes, we believe that this is the best practice and that it's good for the city of Lawrence, things like that. But LexiPoll provides you basically a really high-end template to begin with, based on where you live.
Okay. So it's a template they provide?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Right, any other thoughts?
Well, in case law, so I'd just say that there's constantly a new body of case law related to law enforcement and these policies. And they're, they're a service to scan those and make sure that they're integrated into policies too.
Okay, thank you. So like a hypothetical would be if the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act was to have passed, then that would have, that LexiPoll could have gone through, made modifications on policies based on what was passed through law, then we would pass our items through to see where they held up in regards to new federal standards that really, as it relates to that law.
Yes, there's often updates on, uh, new state law or new federal law. And so they would push that through and say, here's the recommendations that we recommend you change. Um, and then our, we would go through and say, does it meet the, the new act? And then we would work with city legal.
Right.
Make sure that we, we agree that our practice meets what they're saying. So we get double attorney usage in that way.
Got it. So yeah, so just, uh, quickly, a couple of things. I, I, again, I do appreciate these presentations, um, especially the ones on accreditation. Having done that work, it is a, it can be a labor of love or a chore for those, but mostly for us who love being into minutia. It is a labor of love. So Brooke, thank you for, for taking that on for, for this community, for our community. You know, and I'm glad that we participate in accreditation. Um, I'm often saddened when I hear that accreditation is our gold standards when it comes to public safety and public works. Every community should be at a gold standard, but I understand trying to set oneself apart to get the upper hand. So that is something we're doing. I'm not opposed to it. And well, of course, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I, I'm glad that we, we do it. So in that, in that piece, I love it. What I really enjoyed was in regards to us accepting the DOJ, um, grant. I was happy to see that. And when we were at NLC in, I feel like, what was it, March? Um, had the opportunity to meet with the DOJ, the DOJ's COPS, um, liaison. And that COPS grant really has a lot of latitude as far as what it could be utilized for. Several things that it could be utilized for, for, um, community policing, um, for different types of critical topic trainings and communities. And there was one in particular that I was looking at was the tribal resources grants. And so this is just my way of plugging how we can think about the different roles that we have within, um, our public safety entity and what we're trying to do as it relates to our strategic plan as, as in regards to community engagement and equity and inclusion and safe and welcoming. Cause I know we have one data point that we're not collecting on in regards to our BIPOD community and how we can utilize some of this funding to leverage opportunities to engage with our partner, our local partners in that co-governance piece to do some of this work. Most of these COP, uh, these DOJ COP grants, um, are not just for government entities. They're for nonprofits, they're for tribal organizations. And so as we identify the gaps, the value gaps in our strategic plan and how, what we need to do to connect that, we know that this program has opportunities for that. And so as we look, you know, accreditation is the gold standard and I wanna make sure that we're doing gold standard projects in our community to speak to that gold standard. Cause I don't want us to be CLIA and we still have, you know, our BIPOD community doesn't trust our police. That defeats, to me, accreditation means nothing to me in that. And I'm not saying that's the case here with us. I don't want that to be the case and I don't wanna be the one to call that out. So there are some grants on there that I was just looking at and I love it and it was just, it, it had me salivating, but, um, you know, I'm glad that we are moving forward with CLIA. I know that was something that came up in the City Gate Report, um, that just takes us above and beyond. And so, um, it's, it's nice to see those, to see those points come back and see us working that through our outcome presentations and seeing that work presented, um, and elevating within, within our public safety group. So thank you again. Thank you for presenting. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everybody.
Commissioner, so just, uh, as a point that you're bringing up, just wanted to remind everybody that we started our domestic violence victim witness coordinator.
Yes.
Grant. We currently have a wellness coordinator, uh, through a grant and then we utilize it for some other equipment. So we are actively seeking ways.
Right.
Department and help the community.
Yes, and, and I mean, and I meant to stick to that. So I mean, we are, we are, and I think we've had this conversation about how we're doing great things and how, but we're not, and I say but, we need to be better about telling that story and being the model or being the model entity that we are and continue to elevate it. Cause I love that we do that and I wanna see us do more of that because it fits that whole CLIA piece. I mean, if we're CLIA accredited, that means we're doing awesome projects, which we are. And I wanna make sure that we're also doing projects that speaks to those key performance indicators within our strategic plan. And like I said, we still got some that are missing. I think, I see that as an opportunity. That's not a deficiency. That's an opportunity for your team to continue doing the great work that they're doing. And it seems like we have a unit here that's getting that going and I, and I couldn't be more proud of that. So thank you.
And I would volunteer myself if you would like to have future conversations about other grants and if I can provide grant writing support or guidance in any way, please reach out.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's just a matter of just the co-governance pieces. How do we, when we have grant opportunities that impact our public service and public safety, um, but there's a component to bring community partners in to help carry that work. I, I would love for us to do this, to do more of that and not see it as the community believes that the funding needs to come from the agency for our partners to do the work, but there's a shared work and responsibility around it and we're finding money to do it. So working smarter and with someone else's money. I like that.
Me too.
All right, any other thoughts? If not, um, thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, we're onto the regular agenda items. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute supplemental, supplement agreement number three to the engineering services agreement with Dake Wells Architecture in the amount of nine, of $904,000 for design development of the MSO Operations Campus Phase One, Project MS 1-00023A.
Um, could, could you let Andrew Cooper share his screen?
Could you let Andrew Cooper share his screen?
You should be good now, Andy.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Andy Ins, Engineering Program Manager for the City Municipal Services and Operations Department. I will be presenting an update on the MSO campus project with the design team from Daik Wells Architecture, Ortel Architects and CFS Engineers. And I'll be requesting commission action on the next steps in the project. Next slide, please. So I'll start with a couple of slides on the project history. In October 2019, the city engaged Daik Wells to design the MSO campus project. During the first phase of design, the team developed an MSO campus conceptual plan, which we'll see here in a little bit. We wanted to understand how the field operations divisions work together and the conditions of the facilities they work in. Based on this information, back, back a slide, sorry, Andrew. I'll let you know when to move on. Based on this information, the design team determined how the division should be grouped, what the new facilities might look like and how much they might cost, and then how the facilities could be phased. And then in April 2021, Daik Wells began schematic design of MSO campus phases one and two. And that was through supplemental agreement number two. So phase one of the, of the project is the campus entry. The MSO building, which includes streets, stormwater, water, wastewater, traffic, inspections, engineering and MSO administration. And then it also includes the fuel island. Phase two of the project includes a central maintenance garage. Schematic design for phases one and two is nearly complete. And so tonight I'll be requesting commission action on the next steps of the project, which includes preparation of design development documents and then engagement of a construction manager. Okay, next slide. So the, one of the first things we looked at as the team was visiting the existing field operations facilities. We found that the facilities are critically undersized for current and future needs and require major operational and safety improvements. You could see some of the office space that we have for a couple of divisions and then central maintenance garage there on the top right. Next slide, please. Several of the facilities at 11th and Haskell are in the flood plain and floodway. This map shows the fuel island, solid waste, streets and stormwater within the floodway, which is the pink color on the map there. So current land development code limits the possibility of improving those facilities within the floodway and would restrict the possibility of providing sustainable options such as electric vehicle charging stations for those facilities. Next slide, please. This table summarizes the divisions that were evaluated and what the issues are for each division. This helped the design team group the divisions and prioritize them for phasing the project. So the highest priority divisions are those located at 11th and Haskell for the reasons I previously mentioned. Next slide, please. So this project aligns with the city's strategic plan in several key areas. It will address multiple regulatory compliance issues, including the facilities in the floodway, as well as coordination with the farmland remediation project. The project will improve working conditions for staff and increase the efficiency of key city services. And it will be designed to meet the city's sustainability goals. Next slide.
Andrew Cooper, Ortel Architects. I'm just going to go through a little bit of the history and where we're at currently with master plan. The site that the MSO facilities are going to go on is the farmland site. It's just east of O'Connell Road, north of 19th and south of 15th. This is currently a contaminated site that we're looking forward to plan this new facility on. The previous campus master plan as, that was born out of the initial study that Andy described, featured all the facilities we saw on, or all the departments we saw on previous graph chart of having selected deficiencies and needs for new facilities. And this particular master plan, everything, the bulk of the project is pushed to the west. And this result was delivered to the neighboring properties and the neighbors to the west to really engage them and understand what their concerns were with the project. Some of the concerns that we heard from them were unsightly views, noise disturbance and light pollution that would be created by the project, property value destabilization, odors that would be borne from operations on site, site contamination, hazardous materials, not just from what is currently on the site, but what could be created on the site by the new operations. And then one of the biggest concerns we heard from the neighborhood groups was how we would follow through with their feedback. So the current proposed campus site master plan did follow through with a lot of the feedback that we heard from the neighboring groups. You know, pushing the bulk of the facilities now to the far east of the site that is actually quote unquote buildable area. Really looking at preserving that existing tree canopy and that existing green space that is along the west edge of the property. And then looking at how these different operations, the fuel island, the MSO operations facility, the CMG central maintenance garage, and solid waste facility, along with the fuel island and other site improvements, really could come to bear on this site. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes here to orient you with some imagery from the property that illustrates where we're at with the plan. This is an existing aerial taken through drone footage by CFS engineers looking northwest. And this is a resulting rendering of the master plan as it currently sits. You see the central maintenance garage facility towards the left-hand side. And the far left edge is the fuel island canopy. Just to the right of the central maintenance garage is the solid waste. And in the foreground of the image is the MSO operations, which is streets, stormwater, traffic inspections, CMed administration and traffic. This is the intersection of 19th and O'Connell as you go north and that open space along the, the power lines. And you see the neighborhood to the left on the western border. Now this image shows how traffic is coming on and off the site with that straight south to the, to the T of the intersection of 19th and O'Connell and how we're addressing the screening and landscaping around the perimeter of that site as we address that western edge towards the neighbors. And again, you see on the right hand of the image, the far right hand is the MSO facility, which is considerably further down the hill from the fuel island and central maintenance facility. And then towards the back of the site, you see the solid waste facility. So public comments, what we heard once we presented this new master plan and these new images was that they really did appreciate the separation that we created between the neighborhood and the facilities, maintaining that open area. The size of the operation was noticeably reduced. We did exclude some departments that had less red bars in the graph of urgency. And so we're really looking at just the most critical facilities at 11th and Haskell moving to this facility. The drone before after images really helped the visualization and helped the neighbors understand what we are really planning in terms of the project scope. Household hazardous waste, which is really the, the department that had the most public access, is no longer part of this site master plan. And because of that, there's no public, continued public access, which meant less traffic impact. The Birmingham with Evergreen and the acoustic wall strategy was a critical employment in the phase one project to help with that neighborhood buy-in and understanding. They really appreciated the fact that we are listening and that we translated the feedback into actual planning documents that have been submitted. High efficiency dark sky compliant lighting was important to meet those lighting pollution needs as well as motion activated lights at night. So it's really only being lit when action is, is happening and it's not a constantly lit site. And then of course incorporating as many sustainability features on site, not just with the buildings, but within the site to truly create a green campus. Some of those additional sustainable features does include the remediation of the existing site as a brownfield to create a functional usable operation for the city of Lawrence. All the facilities are being designed with an abundance of daylight so that we're reducing lighting electrical loads. That also improves occupant well-being. Durable material, materials for long life municipal projects. Funding doesn't come around often. So when it does come around, we want to make sure that these are long life facilities, 20, 30, even 50 years. Multiple wash bays that are indoors inside the building that reduces odor impacts and also reduces water pollution and water quality issues. Application of best practices at the fuel island to make sure that we're reducing fume and also containing any kind of spill impacts, isolating those from entering the storm water system or the sanitary system. We also want to design for flexibility and resiliency so that these facilities can continue to have long life and adapt as emerging technologies change within the public work service industry. Currently, we are looking at this campus master plan and the facilities tracking lead goal. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan McGinn from Daik Wells to talk a little bit about campus phase.
Thanks, Andrew. Dan McGinn with Daik Wells Architecture. Next slide. Yeah. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about phasing on the project. Here's the master plan again, just to refresh your memory. Next slide shows the site as it exists now. And then the next slide shows phase one, which would include the entrance road and four structures shown in blue there. The fuel island is the first structure you'd encounter. The MSO building, which is the long skinny rectangle. And then two structures, the salt and sand storage structures. So this phase would be designed in 2023 and 24 and built in 25 and half of 26. And we'll have a slide coming up here that kind of summarizes the entire schedule. Phase two would be the central maintenance garage shown in blue there. This phase would be designed while phase one was in construction and then built the last half of 26 and all of 27. Phase three would include the solid waste building and some canopies to shelter the solid waste trucks shown in blue there. The phase would be designed while phase two was in construction and would be built in 28 and the first half of 29. And then phase four would include some degree of enclosing some of the large vehicle parking with conditioned vehicle storage shown in blue there. This phase would be designed while phase three was in construction and would be built the last half of 29. To the first. So here's a summary of the schedule as we see it currently. Zoom in mentally. We're currently at the yellow dot there at the top with this meeting and commentary segment. We're very close to the schematic design for phase one to Andy mentioned. And we're at the point where we really need to focus on design development for phase one. Quick refresher on design phases. So we're in schematic design. That's all about generating many ideas and really drilling down on the best ideas. Design development, which is what we're getting ready to do, is about developing the best idea, understanding generally how it all comes together, thinking about materials and structure. Really start getting a better cost estimation with design development. Then construction documents is the largest phase where the design that is developed during the design development is technically documented for construction. So again, we're at the very tail end of schematic design, ready to march into a schematic design. And we think the project will benefit from the input of a construction manager at risk in the design development phase to help us better understand costs and schedule impacts moving forward. If the request for putting out the CMed risk was passed tonight, that selection process would play out over the next few months and the design team would then be ready with a 50% design development progress set for pricing for phase one only. And that would be available in the fall. And then we'd be able to understand how the vision is aligned. You know, really changing construction costs as we all know. We'd be able to proactively modify the design to finish out design development and have that completed by the first. So we'd also be able to have a little public engagement meeting in the winter of this year to check in with the neighborhood. That's that blue dot just on the other side of 2024. So again, phase one design 23 and 24 would be built out in 25 and 26. Phase two design would overlap phase one construction, built out 26, 27. Phase three design overlap phase two construction, built out 28, 29. And phase four overlapping phase three construction, built out 29 and 30. Next slide talks about, let's see, Andy, this is yours, this is your slide.
Yep, I'm going to take this one, Dan. Thank you. So the project schedule is currently set up for each phase to be constructed consecutively as, as Dan just mentioned. And that's to spread out the costs over multiple years and limit how many divisions are relocating at one time. The phasing is prioritized based on operational need and adjacencies. For example, you know, based on the flooding concerns at 11th and Haskell, the fuel island really must be part of phase one. The project schedule is also being coordinated with the farmland remediation project, which we mentioned. The city will be submitting an addendum to the remedial action plan to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment in the next few months. And that, that addendum includes capping from the MSO campus, buildings and pavement as a proposed remediation strategy. The cost estimates shown in the slide were developed in late 2021 and were the basis for the 2023 through 2027 CIP. We are going to be proposing revisions to the 2024 through 2028 CIP, which includes splitting the project phases into separate projects so we can better track project funding and costs. The proposed CIP revisions also include updated project cost estimates, which Dan will present in the next few slides. These projects will be scored and prioritized during the CIP review process you'll be seeing over the next few months. And then they will be considered in the utility and solid waste rate model review later this fall. With that, I will give it back to Dan.
Daik Wells Architecture. Just a quick review on costs. This slide ties back into. This is one reason we recommend a construction in a drawn board moving forward then through design development. In 2021, like was shown in the previous slide, we did a preliminary cost estimate based on the master plan at that time. Very high level, but somewhere. A total for the four phases for the previous master plan was estimated at 124 million. A few things have changed since then, phase one. Some scope has been added for more administrative space for administrative and administration and CMed divisions. Phase one moved east farther away from the neighborhood and entrance for some comments we got from the neighborhood. We've added some sound walls that burns in response to neighborhood comments. We've also added some condition storage to phase one to get some key vehicles protected sooner rather than later. And most significantly, costs escalated a lot more than. We had planned for two years of escalation at about three to 4% per year. What actually happened was closer to 26% if it was two years, probably unprecedented escalation that has been subject to. Andrew and my last two years have been all topics, topic of cost escalations and trying to figure out what's. All time this topic of cost escalations and trying to figure out what's working on them and controlling them. Next slide talks about some reduction strategies. We did some preliminary cost estimates on our schematic design and costs predictably came in higher than projected. Again, one reason we really want to be working with the CM at Risk. The design team is already in value engineering mode and have been working hard to try to reduce square footage as much as possible in phase one and to look at ways to reduce paving and site costs as well, but currently also tracking altogether about nine percent over twenty-one, twenty twenty-one numbers for the four phases in total. But honestly, we'll know a lot more once the CM's on board and have that fifty percent DD set in hand to look at. And also wanted to note as part of our design development fee, that's part of the ask tonight, we also have some funding to hire a grant writer to
Okay, so tonight you have two commission actions that I'm requesting. The first is to authorize the city manager to utilize the CM at Risk delivery method for the MSO campus phase one project. Finding it is in the public interest pursuant to charter ordinance number forty-five. As Dan mentioned, selection of a construction manager provides several benefits for a project of this size, which are listed here. MSO staff are familiar with the CM at Risk process, which we used at the police station and are currently using for the Kansas River wastewater treatment plant improvements. Next slide. The second commission action item I'm requesting is to authorize the city manager to execute supplement number three to the engineering services agreement with Date Wells Architecture in the amount of nine hundred four thousand for design development of the MSO campus phase one project. Scope of design development is listed here and Dan kind of talked about that. He also mentioned we are including a scope item for writing and submitting grants to supplement funding for the project. Just a note here, we we have submitted a see what it's called again. Building resilient infrastructure and communities grant to the state of Kansas. Or we've submitted a letter of intent, and so we will be pursuing funding for that grant, but as part of this supplemental agreement, we'd be seeking other grants as well and working with the Ferguson Group to to look at opportunities and then working on writing grants to supplement funding for this project. With that, I believe that is all I have, so I'd be happy to answer the questions you have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Andy, I I think Melinda worked on the police station, but my but you might know. My recollection was that doing it with the CMAR actually ended up saving us money in the long run. Do you do you remember that?
I think, I mean, that's that's kind of what our intent is with this and getting the the construction manager on board pretty early in design development phase. So as we propose something and we run it by the construction manager and they say, no, that's going to cost too much. We think you should do this instead. And so just working, you know, together in a partnership there to to manage those costs. I'm not sure if Melinda's still on here. I will check on that about the
Yep, Melinda, Melinda's on.
Thank you, Melinda.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening. Melinda Hager, Assistant Director of MSO. I don't have any of the specific statistics with me, but yes, overall, when we brought the construction manager at risk onto the project in an early part of design, they were able to go in and make a lot of recommendations that then the architects came back with some alternatives, whether that was on some of the construction methods or some of the materials. So overall, we were able to get a lot more into the project than what we had initially estimated. And we we think that is due to the team we had, not just the CMAR, but the architectural team as well. They worked great together and delivered a really good project.
Thank you, Melinda. I think on that didn't, weren't you given a not to exceed price? Was it nineteen million or something?
Yes, we had a guaranteed max price, and so we were able to keep the project within that until we decided to add scope and we got a lot for the little we added. If you recall originally, we had some, you know, shelled spaces and we were hoping instead of a future phase where we would have to build an entirely different building by putting in the shelled space. We were actually able to get those portions of investigations and some other functions into the facility and and benefit from not having to pay for additional mobilization and things like that. So there was there were a lot of that throughout design and construction, finding ways to put more into the project without any added costs.
Thank you. Other questions?
This is Andy Engineering Program Manager. You know, Leah and Omar presented recently on the Kansas River project, and I believe they're you know, the the escalation that they mentioned as well is is pretty unprecedented, but working with the construction manager to find ways to to value engineer that project as well is is a good example of that.
Questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick one. I was just trying to make sure on, I think, was it slide twenty-eight, the Lawrence Field Operations Campus Looking Northwest one? Are those solar panels on top of the building? Believe they are.
And Engineering Program Manager, that that is correct.
All right, cool.
Yeah, we are looking to to use that either on the building or as on a canopy, canopies for the vehicles. As part of the the phase for the overall cost reduction, phase four, we're looking, we'd be looking at, you know, scaling that back from condition storage to canopies as well. And and using that potentially for solar panels as well as vehicle charging stations.
Thank you, Andy. Good to hear.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. Yep. Andy, you had mentioned something about when you're going to go back, you're going to go back and look at the project financially, as well as, you know, how much per project we're going to do on each phase. And you said something about subgroups or subprojects?
Yes, Andy, Engineering Program Manager, MSO. So the the original project, I guess getting into the weeds here, project numbers was MS dash twenty-one zero 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 four. We were proposed, and that included all the phases of the project. It was getting quite difficult to track which phase was in design, which was funded. And then projecting costs out when that was all combined. So what we're proposing for the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight CIP is for phase one to be its own project in the CIP with its own funding and and costs and budget and things like that. Phase two then would have its own project number and phase three, so on like that. So that's how that's we're proposing to split that out. It is not shown this way in in this project, but it will be, you know, when you start to see the the proposed CIP, I believe, next month, that's how that will show up for these projects.
Okay, so my next question is, with it looking like the price is going up, the costs are going up. How is this going to impact our utility rates? Because I think last year there was for three years, it was going to be about a thirty percent increase over those three years. How is it going to impact those going forward?
Andy ends Engineering Program Manager, MSO. So first, I think we have to score score these projects relative to other proposed projects in the CIP. And for example, what we've done previously on utility rates is if we if we know we need to keep a rate, a rate increase the same, we will shift other projects around or reduce the cost of another project or reduce the cost of this project. So that that utility rate increase will not be more than than what we've proposed. As we we go through these CIP projects and and get those scored, we will have to to consider those what we had in the utility rates as well as changes to funding. I think Jeremy has a presentation coming up on that. As we move forward. And so these these cost increases have not been factored into those. You know, how they would impact utility rates, we'll just have to see how these compare to other projects in the CIP first.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Others?
Not to add more to the CIP, but curious forestry and I think facility maintenance were two things that are no longer in the on the campus. Are those still contemplated being moved out of the floodway in the CIP or is that or is it still being considered at all?
Andy ends Engineering Program Manager, MSO. The if we can go back to the red and pink and white table. I think it was sheet or slide five, maybe. Well, so facilities is currently located out at Kresge. And, you know, looking at the size and location, it did not score or was not prioritized quite as high. It was, I believe, phase five or six in the the original campus plan. So the the size of the facilities building, the location of the facilities building, I think is is probably okay for now. I think it will be something that eventually will need to be reviewed. Forestry and horticulture, the same, they're not located in the floodway. They're located number five there. Horticulture is in the flood plain. Forestry, I believe, is actually kind of out out of the flood plain a little bit. Those also, while they're not ideal size size buildings, they are are somewhat adequate for now. I think as we move forward, you know, beyond phase three, or as we get towards phase three, we'd probably have to review these these facilities as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Andy Bruck, who came and requests this project, where are we at with the planning and design for the remediation piece? I know that there's you spoke a little bit about it to the brownfield piece, and I know we've been advocating for a couple of years now for additional funding to subsidize costs and remediation. And I thought we were due for updating the planning and design of that for the remediation piece. And so could you shed some light on that as it relates to this?
Yep, Andy ends Engineering Program Manager, MSO. The so we're working with GHD is the consultant working on the farmland remediation project. They have have kind of wrapped up their the review of the site and they are working on an addendum to the remedial action plan, which includes using capping as as a strategy. So the the pavement and the buildings that would be as part of this campus project would be part of that overall plan. Also, there is some there for design of this campus, there would be separate stormwater systems. One would collect the stormwater, so any stormwater that's not reused as part of the sustainable strategies. If it's collected on the rooftops or the parking lot, it will be directed to the Clean Stormwater Regional Detention Basin, which is actually to the west of your Kersha there. It's actually, it looks like the dirtiest one on the the map here, but it's anyway. So then the 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 grass areas and and that would keep would capture groundwater that is seeping out. That would be directed to the remediation basins that are on the far east part of the site. We have Black and Beach starting on an evaluation for looking at at options to treat the the water. So I guess in short, the water, the contaminated water would go to those basins, the far east part of the site. They would make way into the sanitary sewer just south of there and then be directed to the Kansas River wastewater treatment plant. What Black and Beach is evaluating now is, do we need a separate system, side stream treatment to be built at the Kansas River Plant? Or can it be treated with the the scheduled upgrades that we have going on? So that's, we've got several things going on. Another thing that's actually going on right now is a bid to remove the above ground storage tanks and piping. That is that is out for bid now and probably be seeking to award that in the next four weeks, four or six weeks. So those tanks will be gone. One of the one of the other sustainable strategies we're looking at, there's the giant pile of concrete and rubble out there. We're actually looking at reusing that potentially on the site for temporary roads during construction of the MSO campus instead of having to haul it offsite and then haul in other rock for the contractor to use for temporary roads.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the commission? Not we'll
I have one more. Sorry about this. In terms of, is there, I know it's really early in the process. Do we have any idea what we would do with the buildings that we move from in the in the waterway? Or is it is it still to be flushed out?
Andy ends Engineering Program Manager, MSO. The fuel island, of course, would be removed. The all the buildings through there would be removed. We'd be as part of this brick grant, we that's that's really kind of the focus of that grant is is can we use that money, one, to build the buildings on the campus site, but also to clean up this area here and and provide some restoration and some flood floodway management there and improve that. So so maybe Eleventh and Haskell wouldn't flood so bad. Haskell Avenue, I know there's some restrictions downstream with the railroad crossing and things like that, but you know, part of that grant funding would be to to clean this area up and remove those buildings.
Thank you, Andy.
So some of the, I guess, some of the other buildings certainly could be for sale or or reused for other items. I guess I'm thinking traffic at Fourth and Mississippi. CMG, other buildings that are not in the floodway, I guess.
Got you. Okay.
So we'll open it up for public comment at this time in the audience. There's none. How about on Zoom?
I'm here.
Okay, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any thoughts?
I'm a big believer in construction manager at risk. When you have these large projects that you are looking for, that you can find ways to engineer cost savings. You know, obviously smaller projects, that's not always the case, but with these large projects, I think it's a good system to try to find the most savings. And obviously, this is a big project and all the savings, the better. Obviously, this is a big project and all the savings, the better. Um, so I'd say I'm I'm definitely supportive of that. Um. And, you know, I I think, you know, these. I appreciate breaking it into phases. I mean, I do think that's important um as we continue to look at. Um, all our options, but this phase one of things we have to get out of the floodway, and I think these are things we. We need to move ahead on for sure. Um, and so I also support the. Um supplemental agreement, appreciate the grant writing part of it as well. I do think we have some options there and. Some possibilities there, um given all the things we're doing and. So hopefully we can get some of those as well, which will make this a. Easier project project to move forward and and accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. So. Appreciate all the work on this and appreciate uh um. You know, where we're at now and. You know, as we look at the C I P, we'll have to continue to weigh these things, but I certainly think these phases are ones we should move ahead on.
I would concur. Um, I I especially like uh what Andy had to say recently uh. In terms of remediation for the buildings that we're going to be moving out of and uh work we can do using that money on the. Where they are currently standing in the floodway and. You know, work on improving that environment. Um, I'm encouraged by the fact that they're already looking at cost saving measures. Um, I think that construction manager at risk is a great option. Um, and uh, it uh, yeah, I'm I'm looking forward to the grant writing process and I just wanted to comment as well that um. I know I said it before, but I really appreciate yeah, all of the public engagement that you guys have uh. Gone through through this process. Um, I've I've heard a really good uh feedback from it, so I just wanted to commend you on that. So.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I'll just um add a few things uh to it. Now, I the construction management process is proven to us that it works and and I've seen it on other projects outside of the city. And it definitely is is a way to kind of keep um tabs on the costs and keep it down. I am concerned about the the prospect of um how this is going to impact our utility rates. I think um last year we um approved a pretty significant jump and and looked at two more years of. Anywhere in about eight to 10% jump in each year. So, you know, I would be definitely um looking closely and ensuring that the costs for these projects do not um. Uh negatively impact the the rates other than what we've looked at these past few years. So I would just ask staff to really look at that and in the 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 grant aspect of it was something. That is a little bit newer, and I think that's important that we continue to look at grants and and maybe it may get to the point to where. Um, in order for us to to do some of these projects, it's going to have to be contingent on getting certain level of grant funding with it, matching grant funding. So.
I have a quick question and comment to add. Um, Andy. Or anyone that has historical context on the farmland site and as it relates to Brownfield. How many do we know in the last 10 years, how many grants we've applied for for Brownfield funding, whether it's multipurpose grants? Or cleanup grants? I kind of did a quick scan, but I I don't see where we've been awarded any.
Uh, this Trevor Flynn, Assistant Director of M S O, I could answer that, Commissioner. Um, we've been in discussions with EPA on the Brownfields program and the property does not qualify for the Brownfields. Uh, development grants on the um consent order that is in place.
Yeah.
We assume the liability of the property. Um, and there there were some workarounds that they suggested, but they really want to be in our best interest.
Yeah, and I I I remember that. I just. Was optimistic that maybe they would forget that piece. Um, you know, as as we come up on these on these projects, you know, whether it's. Um, M S O, whether it's yesterday, us discussing um. The potential expansion of fire stations or relocation of fire stations. Our asset management. You know, right now, it's just, it is a very interesting and peculiar time to be at a local elected official in municipal governance. Because what we are dealing with. Are. The sins of commissions pass as it relates to how do we. Employ good policy um and good policy around infrastructure. You know, I've heard so many commissioners near and far talk about solid infrastructure, solid infrastructure. And not to get on a diatribe about neoliberalism or capitalism and things of that nature. Um, but when you want nice things, they cost money. You cannot have champagne tastes with a tap water budget. Um, and we, there are constituents, there our community has a level of taste of what they want. And what as commissioners, as elected officials, as city staff. It is. Our duty. To engage with the community and understanding that balance. I don't want, I I don't want utilities to increase. And my utilities increased $15 on just on the top. And Lord knows, I don't use $15 worth of water. So I mean, I did, well, it's actually $65 now, but and that's probably low for a single person. So I'm I'm not complaining. But I think as we start to look at. House, you know, rent burden, mortgage burden, utilities burden, individuals, and how do we juxtapose that against crumbling, aging? Infrastructure and cross tapping that with asset management and positioning ourselves. To not continue to carry these sins on to the next generation of local elects and our youth. It's gonna be ugly. It's gonna be messy. We we we're not sitting in a good space. Um, and I've always said, you know, this work is difficult work. You don't sign up to do it if you're not willing to make the difficult decisions. And have a little bit of heartburn after you're doing it. So for the number of grants that are out there, there are thousands of other municipalities that have the same ideas that we do. So. You know, there 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 is no magic pill. I think as long as we continue on the path that we're doing, creating strong asset management structures to ensure that we are getting the best time. And use out of our infrastructure, employing a. Grant management system that is always looking for the best opportunities for us to leverage dollars in the va- in the balance gap. Uh, as we're trying to address infrastructure. And as long as we as a commission continue to engage and have those difficult conversations around what we. What what we believe we can tackle now and what we could. Kick the proverbial can down the road to for another. Cycle of commissioners to deal with. That's all working right now. Um, so I mean, I I don't want rates to go up. We had this conversation when we discussed it in the fall. Um, but somehow we're gonna have to figure out a way to have conversations with the community. About what it means. To bring our infrastructure up to. The level that many of us in our community clamor about. That we we enjoy and we love that we don't see and understand that there is a cost component to it. And then figure out policy strategies to mitigate that burden as much as possibly on those in our community are disparately impacted by it. So I don't want to sit up here and say. This is a lot of money. We need to find grants. Cause that's what we're doing. I think we are, we are doing the difficult work and what we need to do a better job of telling the story of. What a per- how far. An individual's funding goes to create the infrastructure that sometimes, I don't want to say we take for for granted, we forget. It's the invisible part that we enjoy so much. You know, the clean, safe drinking water. You know, no lead in our pipes, roads that are, you know, structurally sound. Infra, you know, land for potential growth in industrial infrastructure. Those are the things we need to start telling the story about. And not. Continuing to lean on. You know, I don't want utilities to go up. I don't want utilities to go up, but we need to tell the story of if utility prices are going up. What are they going up for and why are they going up? That's the story we haven't really done a good job of telling. We perpetuate this idea of. We're constantly increasing people's utility rates to no end. And then you get this. This conflict and conversation about this conflated M S O site, not realizing that we've been operating in a flood zone. Way longer than we need to, to the detriment of our staff, of of city staff, putting them in harm's way. So, um. Jumping off my soapbox, but I I just, I I'm just so, I I I I sometimes get frustrated with us when we when we nag on. Price tag and we use that against a battle with utility rates, but yet we don't do the difficult work of figuring out policy to mitigate. Utility costs for those who are disparately impacted. And I'll bring that up in commission items at 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 later on in the meeting, but I'm done at that point.
Motioner, any more discussion, any of motion?
Move to authorize the city manager to execute supplement agreement number three to the engineering services agreement with Daywell's. Architecture Inc. in the amount of 904,000 for design development of M S O operations campus phase one project M S one dash. Zero 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 two three A.
Second.
I got a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, passes five to zero.
And move to authorize the city manager to utilize the construction manager at risk delivery method for the M S O operations campus phase one project M S one dash zero 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 two three A. Findings in the public interest pursuant to charter ordinance number forty five.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor. Aye, opposed, passes five to zero. We're on to item number two, consider approving the sustainable capital projects policy for the city of Lawrence. You want a break?
Yeah.
Want a break? Let's take a quick break, Kathy.
All right, Kathy. I know.
Give us um ten minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Moving the sustainable capital projects policy for the city of Lawrence. We've got Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Richardson, the City Sustainability Director and the Champion of Environmental Sustainability in our city strategic plan. With me tonight on Zoom is Melinda Hager. She is the Assistant Director of the Municipal Services and Operations Department. There she is. And she oversees the CMed group, which is Construction, Management, Engineering, and Development. So, uh, tonight we will be discussing the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy. And before we get started, I would like to mention with a lot of excitement that the city of Lawrence was selected for the 2023 Lead for Cities Local Government Leadership Program. And, uh, this program, uh, helps local governments committed to reducing climate change and advancing resilience and social equity by measuring and tracking performance using the Lead for Cities Rating System. I do want to thank this governing, uh, body for providing a letter of commitment for the Lead for Cities Program and its certification process. Uh, we have already begun, uh, the Lead for Cities Orientation and the initial training, and we look forward to reporting back as we, uh, move further along in the program. Uh, one more thing I do want to say about Lead for Cities Program, because there might be some confusion, is that while there is no requirement to have a sustainability, uh, policy regarding building and infrastructure, like the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy we'll be discussing, having the policy is definitely gonna get us, um, high marks on our scorecard for certification process when we get ready to do that. So I want to make sure that my slides are visible. Oh, okay, great. Um, this is just the starting slide.
Hold it, Kathy, hit share on your Zoom.
Okay, just one second.
Hit that green button. There you go.
We'll get this started again. Just a second. All right, can everyone see that? Okay, great. All right, so moving on to the second slide. The overview of the brief presentation for tonight. So I will go over, uh, the background, uh, which also explains the connection with our strategic plan. And then I'll go over the policy itself, so run through it. And after the presentation, Melinda and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, I will also mention Melinda has, uh, experience with the LEED Green Building Rating System and Envision, and she can also help answer questions regarding our projects in the CIP. So a little bit of background, back on January 3rd of this year, um, you heard a presentation from us on the update of the development of the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy as part of the Strategic Plan Presentation from the Connected City Outcome and the Environmental Sustainability Commitment Teams. And I do apologize, I did not have a voice, uh, or very much of a voice during that presentation. So I think it's okay to recap, um, those elements we discussed, uh, back in the beginning of January. So, um, we did summarize the major components of the policy and answered your questions, and we took your direction to continue to work on drafting the policy with those standards that we had presented. And just a reminder, this policy, if, if approved, is, um, would take effect on January 1st of 2024. And, uh, the reason why we're discussing this policy now and we started the discussion back in January is because it does impact CIP, which I do know will soon be presented and discussed with the governing body. Um, I also wanted to remind you, um, which we men- mentioned back in January, but we have discussed and worked on this policy with the City Sustainability Advisory Board. So there have been, uh, presentations and multiple discussions with that advisory board, and their letter of support is attached to this agenda item. So let's get into the strategic plan a little bit more. This Sustainable Capital Projects Policy addresses the key performance indicator under the Connected City Outcome and Environmental Sustainability Commitment, CC14, number of public infrastructure projects that account for climate adaptation. Um, on the city strategic plan webpage, as well as on this slide, um, you will see that this KPI has an orange cone and the wording, "This data is in development." Um, as we had mentioned in January, the sustainability rating systems, as defined by policy, is really what's gonna give us the means to start measuring and reporting the data under this KPI. And, um, the next slide. I always like to pause and remind ourselves of, um, the strategic plan and the outcome and commitments that we're touching. Um, so just again, a reminder of our connected city. Uh, the city of Lawrence has well-maintained, functional, and efficient infrastructure facilities and other assets. Connectivity supports accessible, sustainable methods for safely moving people and information throughout the community and the region. And investments in these assets reflect the city's commitment to contribute to the well-being of all people. I also like to remind ourselves about environmental sustainability. It's a deep respect for our place and relationship with the planet and environment. We consider the environmental consequences of every decision, big and small, knowing that our actions have impacts beyond our boundaries. We protect and restore our ecosystem to make it healthier and more balanced for future generations. And we'll gonna, we're gonna go ahead and jump into the actual policy, um, that's attached to this agenda item. So, um, again, just highlighting some of the key items on, in the policy that you've reviewed. Uh, first is the purpose. So the governing body establishes the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy to provide consistent procedures and standards for the sustainable management of siting, design, construction, remodeling, repair, maintenance, operations, and deconstruction of city facilities and infrastructure. Um, this policy is expected to yield savings by efficiently managing energy, water, waste, and stormwater while improving the employee and visitor experience. And we do have a list on here, um, that we went over in January on, um, some of those results that this policy is intended to give us. Moving to the requirements section of the policy. Again, we had talked about what qualifying project is, eh, back in January. And again, um, those qualifying projects are really to be understood as projects that do not meet any of the exemptions that are being identified within this policy or as directed by city commission. And what we are saying in this policy is that for all qualifying projects, the city will be utilizing one of the sustainability rating systems. So, um, within the policy, we do call out, uh, the LEED, which is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, uh, Green Building Rating System, uh, to be used, uh, wherein the principal project goal is the construction or renovation of buildings. And the Envision Rating System, which I knew, I know is new to a lot of people, is, um, utilized, uh, for all other, uh, qualifying infrastructure projects. I do want to highlight, there is a sentence within this policy that says that other rating systems may also be utilized, um, at the direction of the city commission. So we do know there are other rating systems out there. Um, a lot of them are evolving, and there might be an opportunity to use one of those other rating systems with one of the city projects. So to go, um, kind of, uh, by project type, uh, the new construction and major renovations of buildings. Uh, so all qualifying building projects shall achieve LEED certification. And new city facility projects shall strive to achieve LEED certification at the gold level. We did also add, based on feedback from this governing body and the Sustainability Advisory Board, that if a, uh, building project that, that does not qualify, because, um, they are, you know, listed in the exemptions list based on the square footage of occupied space. So let's say it's a building that is 9,000 square feet instead of the 10,000 and above, shall still use the LEED checklist, but it would not be required, uh, to get its certification. The next project type is the new construction and major renovation of infrastructure. So all qualifying infrastructure projects shall, uh, strive to achieve Envision verification. And there's a list there of what, um, qualifying infrastructure projects include, like transportation, pedestrian, and utility assets. And similar to the building side of things, we did add a, um, sentence in here that when it's a non-qualifying new construction infrastructure project that was exempt based on cost, so in, in other words, it's less than the $2 million threshold, we're still gonna use the Envision checklist, just not getting it verified. And again, this goes to the whole, um, commitment of environmental sustainability that we're still going to be talking about, um, you know, the sustainability, um, uh, uh, aspects of building or infrastructure, even if they don't qualify based on those, um, exemptions. So we did have a funding section, and, um, just highlighting the city of Lawrence shall finance projects at the level suitable to meet the policy requirements. I did want to pause here, and I know we already had this conversation, but just to reiterate that there is going to be an increased cost at the front end. Um, the increased costs in design and engineering, as well as construction. And, uh, we view this as an investment. So over time, the city show, um, experienced return on investment with the lower utility costs and lower operations and maintenance costs. Um, and as this agenda item, uh, mentions, the fiscal impact, uh, really does vary depending on the project, and those costs are gonna be factored into future capital project policy, planning, sorry, um, if the policy is approved. Execution, we've got, um, you know, just a section about the, uh, whose responsibility it is for insurance compliance of the policy, which is at the director level and/or, uh, assigned designees of the city departments. Um, one section, or one item within that section I did want to highlight, is that, uh, we mentioned that all appropriate project managers and maintenance and operations staff are encouraged to pursue the LEED or Envision credentials, and they are responsible for maintaining their credentials and with continuing education. I did just want to mention that we recently had a class, um, of, I believe it was 15, uh, city employees that went through the Envision, um, training, some of who have already, um, taken their exam and others who are in the process of becoming Envision Sustainability Professionals. So I did want to mention that.
Kathy, real quick, I have to interrupt, but for a point of reference, how much is that to maintain the LEED and Envision credential?
Um, that is a good question for Melinda, if she is online.
Love that pivot.
She's, she's got her, uh, LEED and, um, currently doing continuing education credits.
Yes. I'm happy to answer that. Melinda Hager, Assistant Director of MSO. So the renewal, um, fee itself, it's just a couple hundred dollars, and you can get a lot of the, um, continuing education credits through some free resources or some low cost online. Um, we would like, you know, the opportunity to occasionally every few years send someone to a conference to get some of that, you know, in-person training for that. But for each one of our credentialed, um, uh, project managers, we have 14, and so far eight have already earned a credential in either LEED or Envision. So we're at over halfway there, the goals by the end of the year. Um, so we're looking at budgeting between, you know, five, $600 a year for the continuing education for each of those individuals, um, associated with the, with the credential that they need to maintain. That's a little conservative right now, um, but, um, it's probably an average over several years. That's probably what we're looking at, about $500 a person.
Okay, and that line item would be to completely cover continuing ed or to supplement, subsidize the costs? So would that cover everyone?
That would cover the cost for just this credential. Um, our project managers, most of them are also professional engineers. So we pay $70 every two years to renew our license, and we have to get 30 continuing ed credits for that as well. Many of our credits will overlap, so we'll look for opportunities where we get our professional engineering education, as well as sustainability education at the same time.
Is that 30 every year or?
Every two years.
Okay, so it's on a two-year cycle. Okay.
Thank you for your questions. I also wanted to just mention briefly on reporting, um, and the metrics for this. Again, this, uh, Sustainable Capital Projects Policy is really what is, um, the strategy behind CC14. So we're going to be measuring and updating that KPI, like other KPIs within our strategic plan, and posting that on the webs, the city's website and, and so forth. Um, there is a fifth section in this policy on exemptions, and I just wanted to go over a few. Um, there's emergency situations. Um, the second one that you see there is regulatory requirements, which I know, um, I've gotten a few questions about. So just an example of a potential, um, project or that falls under this might be, uh, where, um, there is a new requirement for water treatment, and the advanced notice of when we have to be in compliance with this new requirement is a compressed timeline that would not allow us to maybe fully go through that Envision verification process, because it takes, um, time. So ju- just an example of what potentially could fall under there. Um, also projects entering design phase prior to January 1st of, um, 2024, and projects not owned by
by the city as in if it's a KDOT project that the city contributes a little money to, but it's a KDOT project, that is exempt and also as directed by the City Commission. We had shared back in January where we have set some thresholds for buildings and also infrastructure projects. And this is based on reviewing a lot of these policies that other cities and counties have passed. And so again, just a reminder on a new construction and major renovations of buildings, it's projects creating or renovating fewer than 10,000 square feet of occupied space would be exempt, but we're still using the checklist for LEED on those building projects, just not the certification. There's also a definition of what minor renovation would be. And then the next section on the new construction and major renovations of infrastructure, again, that threshold of the $2 million. So anything that falls below that would still go, that it's a new infrastructure project would go through the checklist of ENVISION, but not the verification process. There's a like-for-like equipment and/or component replacement that was listed on here as well and projects and programs that principally rehabilitation and maintenance within an established corridor. So those are the five sections of the policy that we are presenting to you with those standards we talked about back in January. The action requested tonight is to approve the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy for the City of Lawrence. And really at this point, I'll just pause for any questions that Melinda or I could answer.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple. First off, it's really good news to hear about in the beginning about the LEED aspect of it. I was just curious, what kind of, you know, person power will we need to, you know, maintain that accreditation or anything of the sort? I know that it seems like for that type of thing, when we go for accreditations, we usually have an accreditation manager. I know for the police department and also the fire department we do, I was just wondering, I was just curious about that, that aspect of it.
Yeah, good, good question. So for LEED for cities, the certification process, right now we're going through that leadership program that's really giving us the tools and resources that we need to kind of get started with the certification process. I, we, we had talked to several other communities that have been through this process. I particularly spent a lot of time with the Sustainability Director over at Johnson County because as you know, they announced last year that they completed their certification process and were awarded the gold level for LEED for cities and counties. And actually just last week, Kansas City, Missouri completed their certification process and made their announcement and they also were at the gold level for LEED for cities. So in talking to other cities and counties that have been through this, it is very staff intensive, the process is, it really is, you know, a lot of the communities utilize the sustainability office that frankly, for many, it's just one or two people, but then they connect with all the other departments to get the, the data that's needed to pull together that certification. I do know from Johnson County, Brian mentioned to me that it was, it was very hard and stressful. It took them two years to, to get through that certification process. There was a delay with COVID as well for them. And most of these communities are, are hiring an intern to assist or, you know, a second person on. I know that for our experience, the MSO Department has offered up a staff person. Melinda Hager is actually going through the leadership program with me and will also kind of be leading all the departments through the certification process. But I, I hear it's a lot of work, but others have been through it and have been extremely helpful with letting us know what the experience is like and, you know, where to find some of the resources and tools that we need.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. I, it seemed like it was, but I didn't want to leave you on an island by yourself trying to maintain it. So I was just curious about that.
And, and just so you know too, once we complete the certification process, then every five years we would recertify.
Okay. Um, and I was just curious on another aspect as well, in terms of the sustainability, you know, capital and projects policy. You know, you mentioned the accreditation process and that, you know, you didn't necessarily need one, but it helped in terms of, you know, giving you that extra boost. I was just wondering about the grant process as well. I was just curious, I would think it would help, you know, kind of give our city or our departments a boost and having them know that we have this policy in place and we're trying to go through this checklist. I was just curious if that would make any sort of difference.
And just making sure that grants policy?
Oh, yeah, yeah. If, when we apply for grants and, you know, kind of our viability and, you know, if it might move us, you know, a couple notches ahead of the line.
Sure, the scorecard and, and just so you know, like to be honest, we're just learning this process. I mean, we're at the very beginning and one of the things they've revealed to us at the first day orientation kickoff day is that the scorecard is changing. So they are undergoing a process where there's going to be an update in July. So they kind of have us looking at what all the information they need and what policies, you know, our cities have passed or are working on. But we're not yet too deep in the weeds with it because there are going to be some significant changes to the scorecard. But just, just think of it as, you know, if this policy, you know, if we didn't have this policy, doesn't mean that, mean that we're not going to be able to get certified. We certainly are, we're just not going to score well in that section, while we might score higher in other sections like you mentioned. But yeah, it certainly does help with our certification process. And somebody asked that orientation, hey, can we, you know, now that they know what the scorecard says, can we go ahead and quickly work on a policy just to pass it right before we get that certification? And really what the U.S. Green Building Council is letting us know is this isn't a rush to maybe correct where you know there's going to be gaps in your sustainability framework. This is just a true, where are you as a city or county? And let's report that and get certified for that. And then when we recertify, we already maybe have five years working on some of those gaps that we need to fill in because we always want to improve our sustainability. So again, there are some cities and counties within this program that are, were already underway with something like what we're working on right now. But by no means is a rush to get any of these items passed. With the Sustainable Capital Pro- Projects Policy, we've started this work and the team that's been working on this has been meeting since early last year. We were working on it as part of that KPI within the strategic plan. We're really energized to get this moving, to get some metrics to this KPI and that's why we're here recommending it.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to also add related to grants. I'm not sure that a certain certification level on LEED for cities necessarily, you know, ranks you higher on a particular grant, but we can definitely use a lot of the language and what we learned through the process to highlight all the extra sustainability aspects that we have, that we offer to our projects. So that would, would surely help. And we've noticed in just these first couple meetings with our cohort, with these communities across the country, there are so many resources and just in some of the breakout rooms, they're talking about this grant or this bill going through or, you know, what they've done to move forward and different things and capture some of those dollars that are available. So I think we're going to have a lot of resources through this process that will help us to secure grants on some of our projects also because we'll learn from, from others.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Thank you both, I appreciate it.
Other questions?
Kathy, real quick, under the exemption section, C where it says projects entering the design phase prior to January 1, 2024, do you all have a working list to share with the commission as far as what those projects look like? So if there's discussion to be had, we can have that?
Absolutely, and I believe Melinda was ready with a list.
Ah, jumped ahead, so we'll put a pin there. And then I'm, I'm processing through this under the exemption piece. The, so we as a commission can exempt any project that fits under the requirements under section two. So I guess I'm trying to, at what point, I guess, I'm thinking in the process of this coming before us, at what point if the commission was to interject would be, at what stage would that be? Is that in the review of the scope before, you know, in the bidding process? Is that after we receive the design? Where did you all envision if the commission was to exempt a required project, where would you want that, that conversation to be had so that you're aware of whether or not we plan to exempt it or not?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I will also mention that Melinda, just her project management group and experience can chime in to discuss that, but we want to know early on in the process. We did talk about potentially what an example of an exemption that a city, the City Commission might give is we are under the impression that, you know, under this policy, our fire stations are going to fall under the policy and we're going to, you know, go for a LEED gold certification. We understand that there's funding from the city and the county, so that might be a, a discussion, but I'll let Melinda answer about where in the project management steps her staff would be asking for that direction from the City Commission.
Got it. Other questions?
Well, Melinda?
Yeah, I'm happy to keep this answer pretty, pretty short. I would say if, if the commission knows at the time we're looking at a CIP, you know, five-year CIP, and there's a brand new project coming on that next year for design and there's already, you know, a variety of reasons why it, it might be considered. Kathy mentioned one, you know, if there's a large funding source outside the city and there's been negotiations or something and it needed to be exempt for some reason, or if additional funding needed to come from the city to cover that aspect and that was part of the negotiation, we would want to know that piece of it. We would definitely prefer to know before we would award a design agreement, engineering services agreement, so that we didn't include all that scope of work associated with going through the checklist and the registration and all of that. We would, we would hate to move forward on all of that if that was not the direction of the commission. So we would hope to know by that point before we enter into contracts.
Wonderful, thank you.
Kind of a specific question on the exemptions. On F, you have projects creating or renovating fewer than 10,000 square feet or you have a 25% value, but that's only on the building envelope or the technical building system. So just trying to read this together, I mean, you know, let's say one of our old fire stations, 10,000 square feet and we're going to repurpose it or we want to, it's more than 10,000 square feet and we just want to put new carpet and new paint on the walls. So we're touching more than, we're renovating more than 10,000 square feet, but maybe we're only spending, you know, a hundred thousand dollars doing that. Would that qualify under this policy that it'd have to be LEED gold?
I'm, I'm happy to jump in on this one, Kathy. So in that instance, if it's not a brand new building, then it would fall under the renovation and the exemption FB is kind of what is defining what is a major and a minor renovation. So just replacing carpet, for example, would not be something that you would go after LEED in any way just for that. That's like an interior finish type, you know, maintenance item. But if you were renovating substantial building components, I mean, you were looking at windows, HVAC, roofing, maybe adding renewable energy, and that's when you would be looking at, okay, this is a renovation. Are we looking at, you know, is this more than 25% of the value of the building, all this work we're doing? If so, we're saying, okay, this is a major renovation, we're going to look at the particular LEED, you know, building, design and construction, that particular checklist and go for that rating system associated with this. We've also put in there, we go for LEED certified on major renovations, or at least that's what the policy sings, is the requirement. If we can get gold, that's great, but the gold is the requirement for new.
Well, that,
If that helps.
I guess that's what I want the policy to say. I guess I'm not sure that's what the policy says. I mean, is that, do you mean in subsection F when it says major innovations? But then you define what a minor renovation is and minor renovations don't in, I guess I'm trying to figure out how that, because a minor renovation is defined as a renovation when the total cost related to the building envelope or the technical building is lower than 25%. So you're saying if it doesn't touch the building envelope or the technical system, it automatically qualifies as a minor renovation? Is that how you read that?
We are reading that as if you're, if your renovation is more than 25% and it is touching one of those major systems, then that's a major renovation. If it's under 25% and not touching any of the major systems, then that would be a minor renovation. It would be difficult to achieve a LEED certification if you're not touching things like the HVAC and the roof and the windows and those components. You wouldn't be able to score points.
Well, that was my concern, that's what I was trying to. So you, you're reading that B to be and 25% and touching the building envelope or the technical system?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll lean into that. I'll lean into that, that's what I wanted to say, so I, I'm not sure I read it that way, but I'll lean in.
That would do it.
Thank you.
What a technical amendment.
Other questions? We've got one. So Melinda, with the, the, the cost to get a building LEED certified is pretty expensive or can be pretty expensive. So by having our staff certified, will they be able to perform that endeavor, that process and save some money or is it something that has to be done by an outside firm?
We could perform some of these, depending on the project. A lot of the ENVISION is lower cost to even get them registered or certifi- verified would be the first level of ENVISION. So some of those we could do, if we have a design firm on staff or, you know, that we've, are, we've entered into an agreement with a design firm, then a lot of the information's actually coming from their design calculations, so we would utilize them for that piece of it. Some of the added cost is going through the technical pieces and the different analysis and the modeling and we do not have all the modeling systems in-house for things like building orientation, lighting, electrical loads and modeling of, of that with the building information systems and, and things of that nature. So we can do some of it. We can be the LEED accredited professional, for example, on the, on the team and take care of some of those responsibilities, but on the design side, we would need their participation and that would add some cost. There's some things within the project that is involving, you know, meeting with the community and community engagement. We may be able to do some of that in-house and some of that outsourced as well. Some of those pieces of it. A lot of the added costs, the, the more substantial part of the added cost is really that investment in the materials, in the, you know, renewable energy systems, in a more efficient HVAC system and those types of things. So that's where you get most of the cost, not necessarily on a design engineering side. For these size of projects that we were looking at, you know, three to 5% and that, that is conservative, but that should take care of all the additional that we're looking um, all the additional that we're looking at from a design and commissioning. You know, more of the engineering uh, side of things is the additional cost. And it's not a bad thing to have them come in at the end of the project and say that everything was designed um, according to spec and verify that and, and have that confirmation um, as far as, you know, the operations of HVAC, for example.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll open it to public comment. Public comment on this side and not online?
Kay Johnson.
If I can get my, can't figure out how to re, to remove my hand, but it's gonna be there for a minute. Um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, my name is Kay Johnson, and I'm the Sustainability and Environment Manager for Proseco, an eighty-five-year-old family-owned construction product manufacturer located here in Lawrence. Every day, Proseco staff members work with architects, project managers, and engineers that are responsible for buildings and infrastructure projects, including those seeking green building certifications such as USGBC's LEED standard. Now, um, projects that are certified to high achieving green building standards demonstrate a higher level of performance and sustainability, helping to provide more cost-efficient operations with a longer building or infrastructure life through resiliency. Lead certified projects by design reduce energy and water usage as well as provide a healthier and more comfortable environment for building occupants. With these considerations, as well as many more that I've not mentioned, Proseco supports this proli, policy as written. We urge you, the city commissioners, to vote to adopt the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and the commitment to sustainability that you've already adopted in the city's strategic plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Other public comment online? Uh.
No, Mayor.
Bring it back to Commission, any discussion on this?
I think this is a great start, and uh, you know, it's, I'm glad to see that it has the support it does. Um, and uh, it'll provide us a good backbone for upcoming capital improvement projects.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think it provides consistency with across the board for larger projects and, and I think that's a good thing. Um, I, uh, past several months, I've been ex, exploring the lead certification program and talking with um, different professionals who are both certified and those who use, use the, the program. And because historically, I, I've never thought the actual certification was as important as following the checklist. And um, after having many discussions with some of these professionals, I've gotten a better appreciation for why that certification is important versus just the checklist. And I really appreciate those conversations that I've had. And it has changed my mind on that from, from votes that I've taken in the past. So, so um, I am on board with that, and I think it has a very important place in our process of becoming more sustainable. So I'm, I'm for this, I think it's a good, it's a good start.
Thank you for bringing us, bringing this in front of us, Kathy and Melinda. I know when we were having some rather interesting comments and conversation and discussion around the bus hub, this was a sticking point for me. Um, that I, that I stated to the commission that if this was something that we wanted, then we need to be able to articulate it. And I'm glad that you both heard that and heard that, and you heard my pain and put it into policy. And um, I do appreciate what you put it in front of us. Um, I will make a note in, in the line under requirements where it says that other rating systems may be utilized at the direction of the city commission. Um, you know, with any good policy, we do need to revisit. And Kathy, you did state that sometimes industry ratings change. Um, you know, I don't know how often you all plan to revisit this policy um, to make sure that it is, has aged well. Um, but if there is a deficiency and we're not bringing scope to you as far as, I think we should change this to this rating system. I will, I, I would like to encourage you all to bring that to our attention, to say, you know, well, you know, lead's great, envision's great, but there's, there's a new cat on the, you know, in the field, and we think we, you should be able to add, we should include that in there as well, so, so that we have that conversation, because we're not the subject matter expert. So I will be leaning on you all as much a deep diving that I, I, I choose to do by punishment. But in that line, if, if there's something that we haven't brought to you and you notice that it's on trend and we should be looking at it, please bring it to our attention so that we can modify this policy and, and amend things as we need to. So thank you for this presentation.
Any other thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we approve the Sustainable Capital Projects Policy, also known as the SCPP for the City of Lawrence.
Second?
First and second, all in favor? I opposed, it passes five to zero. Onto item three. Thank you, Kathy, and, and all the Sustainability Board for the work that they've done on this. So item three is direct staff as appropriate regarding key policy decisions impacting the twenty twenty-four budget.
Yeah, hello, good evening. Jeremy Wilma, Finance Director.
I, I wanted to just kick this off, uh, and uh, take this time to introduce you all uh, to our new Budget Manager, uh, Ally Porter. Um, she's done some great work to get us uh, ready for tonight. And I really just want to make sure that um, we understand that the, the presentation that we're providing tonight is really just to provide context uh, for the discussion of budget that will be occurring in twenty twenty-four. So uh, for purposes of that, that framework, we're using uh, the, the figures that we provided in twenty twenty-three without any major uh, modifications to it. And the um, the uh, you know, the departments are currently working on their budget request. Um, we're going to utilize, you know, the, the information that we gleaned from, from you all tonight for policy as well as uh, some tools that, that Ally's gonna share with you uh, later in this presentation uh, to really help frame the uh, recommended budget from the, from the city manager, at which point we'll have a more robust discussion about revenues and estimate, revenues and expenditure estimates for twenty twenty-four. Um, but with that, I'd just like to uh, turn it over to uh, Ally, and then uh, we'd be happy to answer questions after she's finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy, and good evening, Commission. Want to attempt to exit out of this? There we go.
Top right zoom and then shift.
Oh. Here we go. Now we're going, okay. Thank you, Kirk. Good evening, Commission, Ally Porter. I'm the new Budget and Strategic Initiatives Manager for the city. I'm very excited to be here uh, this evening as we kick off our twenty twenty-four budget process. So our agenda tonight, we are going to briefly do some background, our twenty twenty-three budget and two of our major revenue sources, what we're seeing today. Uh, we will then focus specifically on our general fund, which is the primary operating fund for the city. And we are projecting some challenges with a structural deficit in our general fund. But the bulk of the presentation is really gonna be hearing from you and um, hopefully getting some feedback from the community as well. So background, our twenty twenty-three budget was passed in September of last year with the commitment to infrastructure, um, the employee, employee pay plan as well as housing initiatives. However, the city has relied upon the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, uh, to fill its budget gap. So we have had our expenditures outpacing our revenues for several years, and we have utilized those ARPA dollars to fill that gap. About ten million dollars was used in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. We're currently projecting one point two million for twenty twenty-three. That number could potentially change as we go through the year. And the remaining roughly eight million dollars has been dedicated to housing initiatives. So we are not showing that uh, to be utilized for twenty twenty-four. Two of the city's major revenue streams, particularly in the general fund, are property tax and sales tax. Um, your property tax, a relatively stable revenue stream, and we are currently projecting an eight percent increase through um, an increase in assessed evaluation. And then your sales tax, again, a five percent increase. And as Jeremy noted, these are very preliminary numbers. When we come back in July, we'll be able to fine tune those with more data. Focusing on the general fund, again, the primary operating fund for the city. You can see here where those dollars go. So twenty-nine percent, uh, the biggest piece is to fire medical, followed closely by police. You then go into parks and recreation at sixteen percent, municipal services at fifteen percent, and then on down the line. And here is where we are showing our projected budget gap for twenty twenty-four. So our blue line is projected revenues, that eight percent increase uh, from assessed valuation growth and sales tax. And then our yellow line is projected expenditures. And I think I'm covering our number here, okay. Um, and there you can see that gap of over four million dollars deficit. So we know structural changes are gonna be necessary in order to have long-term sustainability in the general fund. I think at this point, I'm actually gonna pause and see if there are any questions before I shift gears into the actual policy direction.
Any questions?
I guess I have a question. First of all, Jeremy was probably talking to me when he was, he gave his introduction, because I kept peppering him with all sorts of very specific questions about his revenue numbers and expense numbers, so apologize for that, Jeremy, thank you. Um, but I guess, you know, I want to ask this question about the structural, the term of structural deficit. If we did not give any employee raises, um, would we have a deficit? I mean, is it, I guess I think of structural as, you know, during the COVID and stuff, we had revenues off base, and we couldn't even fund our basic operations. But it seems like now what we're at is, if we want to give raises, we have a deficit. But that's not really a structural deficit, but maybe I'm just posting words.
Well, I'll, I'll let Jeremy get more into it, but structural as in ongoing expenses, including the employee pay plan, yes. I wonder if Jeremy, if you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, uh, I'm just trying to pull up my response to your question. Um, as, excuse me, as Ally mentioned, the, the structural deficit would be when our operating expenses exceed our operating revenues. Um, which if we were not to, uh, in the projection that you see before you, had we left it at baseline and not included uh, a, supporting the pay plan uh, that you all had approved uh, in previous fiscal years, uh, we actually would have revenues in excess of expenditures. Um, but for that to occur, we would essentially have to see no increase in expenditure whatsoever. So no uh, inflationary spending adjustments, no increase for utilities, no increase for staff costs, et cetera. Um, as, as we mentioned before, there probably will be other revenue uh, enhancements, uh, but there will also be other um, expenditure requests. And so uh, what we were trying to do again was just provide a framework that if, if we really held the line on um, on expenditures and, and told departments that they're just gonna have to find those inflationary cost index uh, increases within their current constraints. And all we provided money for was a uh, the step plan increase. Um, just that increase alone, based on what we think is gonna happen with our two most significant revenue sources, uh, when we pull the ARPA funding that's been supporting the general fund the last two years out, there's about a four point six million dollar gap. Um, so again, we're just trying to provide context and framework, but we're not saying that there is a four point six million dollar gap right now in the budget, uh, because departments are currently working on uh, the needs that, that they see that they have to meet the uh, requirements from the community through the strategic plan. So uh, the budget that we intend uh, to present to the city manager, who will then in, uh, present it to you, um, will be to fund the strategic plan. And uh, what we wanted to do tonight was simply just show you a, a preliminary gap. So um, again, just to sort of provide context, but it's a structural gap in that um, if, if this were the budget that got approved, we would have to find an ongoing revenue source to maintain this budget into the long term. Um, yes, there will always be, you know, revenue uh, increases in future years, but there assumed would also be uh, expenditure increases. So ideally, what we want is our operating revenues to match our operating expenses and that fund balance, if any fund balances use or any one-time revenues are used. It's really to support capital or one-time costs that could then be pulled out of the budget in the preceding year and not impact operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got one. Jeremy, when I'm looking at the graph um, that shows the preliminary general fund budget gap, I had thought in twenty twenty-two as well as twenty twenty-three, the projections were that we're, we would have about a five million dollar gap in like twenty twenty-two as well as twenty twenty-three. And what I'm seeing there is that that, there's no gap there at all. That the spending versus the revenues are pretty much right on the money with each other. Can you talk about that?
Sure, that's because we used ARPA funds to bridge that gap.
Okay, I had thought we, that included ARPA funds back when those projections were made, when we saw the budget. Did not, apparently.
Well, um, essentially, we were trying to show a different picture. So we were showing the gap to see what ARPA was going to fill, but on this line, we're showing you what ARPA actually did fill.
Okay, got it.
Because in twenty twenty-four, all, all the ARPA dollars that we have left, we believe have been uh, earmarked for housing initiatives. And so there's no, uh, currently in the twenty-four budget, there's no ARPA funding programmed into general fund revenue.
Okay. So the sales tax have been, has been coming in pretty, pretty good the last couple of years, above our projections of two percent or whatever our projections were. So even with tho, those increased sales tax, we didn't make any headway, it doesn't seem like, on this budget gap. Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct.
Okay. Was it because we were, no, never mind, I won't ask that. Any other questions? Okay.
So getting into our policy direction from the Commission, we're gonna start with some two very high-level early uh, questions. And that is if the Commission is supportive of us continue, continuing the employee uh, pay plan, the market competitive compensation plan, and also if there is any guidance that you would like to provide early on on the mill levy. And again, I'll pause.
Okay. Thoughts?
Can, and I ask a little bit of this and a question to Jeremy, but what, what's the dollar amount when you say market competitive compensation plan? I know there's a, there's some steps and there's some base increase. What dollar amounts are we talking about related to that?
I believe, uh, I believe what we have programmed into the budget right now is around four and a half million dollars across all funds. It's about three and a half million to the general fund. That includes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there. Can I continue?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt. That includes the wages and then the applicable benefits. So the pension, the taxes, all the benefits.
Okay. Other questions? So are we also talking about the mill levy? You want guidance on the mill levy?
Real quick, Jeremy, refresh my memory. So our market competitive compensation plan, that's just for current employees? To our new employees, as we're bringing them and onboarding them, are they participating in this step plan?
Jeremy, well, yes, all employees are participating in the step plan. What we have been doing the last couple of years is trying to get some of our more long-tenured employees to the appropriate step. So they may be accelerating up the ladder, if you will, so that employees with five, six, seven years of experience aren't being compensated at the same level as employees with two years' experience, for example. So I believe we're fairly close to getting people where they need to be. But all new employees, when they're hired, are hired on a step. So, you know, they're starting at the right place to prevent us from backsliding, if you will.
Okay.
And I guess as a follow-up, I had recalled that we had, you know, two pretty significant years of implementing that market competitive. And as you, I think you were just saying there, Jeremy, we've kind of done some of those major adjustments and now we're just more into the step. I think it was $5 million the last couple of years, and now you're talking $3.5 or $4 million. Is that right? Craig is shaking his head, so.
That's correct. We had two years, we implemented the 2018 recommendations adjusted to market over two years because there's a lot to bite off. But now we've made those adjustments and we should now, we're in maintenance mode. That means both making step adjustments and then keeping up with inflation or cost of living or market conditions. We want to make those adjustments to the structure.
So that is some savings over the past two years?
It's not increasing the base as fast as we were over two years.
Right.
Those are big.
Those are big.
Big chunks that we had to absorb, and now we absorb perpetually. Those are foundational, and now we just keep adding on to them to maintain the market pay instead of having to catch the market. We've caught the market. We're now keeping up with it.
Our step increases are approximately how much? Is it like 2.5% increase each step or what is our percentage increase?
The average step increase is 5%. I think as you get closer to the top, it drops down. But the majority of people on the pay plan, it's a 5% increase per step. I would say that's the primary pay plan. The unions have different pay plans. But what we have programmed into the budget is essentially about a 7.5% increase for the average employee.
In maintenance mode?
Yeah, that'd be one step and then an adjustment to the pay plan, 2.5% for the market adjustment.
And is a step, a step is just one year of additional employment? Or is a step something different than that?
No, it's one year of additional employment.
Achieving a satisfactory rating on your evaluation.
Correct.
We don't have any negotiations going on now with the unions, do we?
Yes, we do.
Which one?
I think we have two. Go ahead, Casey.
Oh, sorry. I believe it's two, group six, and the LPOA.
Okay, thank you. Got it. Okay, other questions or other comments, discussion?
Is this an all or nothing? Or could we do like part of one and not the other?
You can. The way we're defining market compensation is two pieces. One, that we're rewarding increased value of the employees. So they've learned more, they're more valuable. They could go get another job because they've got experience and training. We want to progress people in the pay system that way. The other piece is things are more expensive this year than they were last year. And we want to make sure that our competitors are not increasing their pay to adjust to those things any faster than we are. So it's those two components. And really, when we say market competitive, that's what we mean. Those are the ways that we, in basic form, adjust our pay. So if we would compromise either those, yes, mathematically, they're absolutely, you can make adjustments to either side of that or both. But we would want to be referencing what's our market doing? What are our competitors doing? So that we don't get in the situation that we got in of kind of sliding back under and then having to do these massive catch-ups when we've also lost valuable team members to the market because they were being valued that way. So that's my concern, is it's pay now, pay later to stay competitive with market. And obviously, this is a historic market condition that we've been, we were lucky to make our adjustments when we did, I think, so that we didn't have as much ground to gain. But we'll be always checking in on our competition. In government, we get to share these notes openly because it's all public information. But we always check in and look at that market, see how other cities around us are checking and what those pay ranges look like, where the tops are, how fast they're progressing. We look at all those things each year.
Okay.
So we're attaching this to employee evaluation. Is there a minimum COLA base that we utilize? If someone is not excellent or exceptional on their evaluation, is it all or none? Is it a some or none? How do we, because I wish I got 7% every year with the state. I had to fight with the legislature to decide whether or not I was worthy of a pay increase. But I'm just trying to understand, because we didn't really efficiently use the step. And that was primarily because the state got rid of the civil servant designation. So they got away from utilizing step. So we're trying to get, the state is trying to get back to utilizing performance and potential, or at least that's what the legislature was trying to do. So how are we doing this? So is there at least someone is, regardless of performance evaluation, getting a cost of living and everything above that, up to 7% is scored on their evaluation? Or what does that look like?
We, I'm going to keep on going with this. There's other people that can answer too, but I guess I'm Craig explaining. We would adjust, if we did a general increase, that adjusts the entire structure. So somebody, if they didn't move on a merit step in a given year, they would still move with the general adjustment. So all pay gets adjusted, whatever we decide that amount would be to adjust for the market changes. Then they would also qualify for that. But if they did not have an adequate evaluation, they wouldn't move to that step.
Okay.
But it is not, you couldn't do a partial step in our structure that we have.
Okay.
I think the plan, Jeremy, if I'm correct, the one, these rough numbers we're putting forward is a 2.5% in a base and then a 5% step, right?
That's correct. The only percentage is the wage adjustment. That's set at 2.5% and then a step. And what I was saying was that most steps are 5%. But because of the different pay plans and the different agreements, it's hard to just say universally, this is the step.
I think midpoint, they slow, the steps slow less than 5%.
Well, I'm interested in maintaining that market competitive plan with the caveat that, see how the numbers come in as a whole with our whole budget and then take a closer look at it at that time.
I would agree, and I'm just curious as well. How short are we in terms of employees, our current status?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I did see Megan is on the call. I don't know if she has an answer. Megan Dodge. Maybe she's not able to log on. We can find out for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm here.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, the question.
Now we can't.
Yeah.
Oh, you went on mute, Megan.
You went away. There you go. All right, I'm here. Yes, Commissioner, I understand your question was about the vacancy rate. Is that right? Yeah, our current staffing levels. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we're happy to get that to you in the next few days. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just, I know that we're still short, I mean, of our, you know, full staffing level. So that we're asking essentially short staff to do a lot with, you know, what we give them. And I think they're going above and beyond right now. So I was just curious about that. So I would be in favor of the market competitive compensation plan.
I'd say a couple of short things. I'd say, one, you know, I'm also interested in making sure our general employees are competitive with our employees that have their own plans and trying to keep those balanced as we proceed forward on one hand. I guess I would kind of throw out there, I mean, it's probably semantics. I asked the question about the structural deficit. I mean, I really felt in the last several years, you know, with COVID, without knowing what sales tax was going to do, without knowing what property tax was going to do and all the expenses related to COVID, that, you know, using those ARPA dollars to fill that gap, you know, was filling, again, what I would call a structural deficit. I mean, I think really what we have now, we're getting back into more regular budgeting, which is we have revenue and, you know, one of the first things you want to do is pay your employees. So yeah, those are expenses. But it's not, I mean, I guess I want to say it in reverse, which is I appreciate the way the staff has brought us through that structural deficit. And now we're at a point where we are looking ahead to find the, you know, how do we maintain, I think was the word that was used, and I appreciate that. And really, we should, you know, take a second to be happy we made it through COVID and made it through all those, you know, uncertainties and made it through with not a lot of staff turnover. I mean, we had a lot, but comparatively not a lot. So I'd say those things. You know, but I am, you know, I am interested in trying to keep the mill levy flat or even looking at lowering it. Caveat, talking about the fire and the cost of the fire departments going forward, you know, be that on a ballot issue, but if it's not on a ballot issue, keeping that a little somewhat separate in the discussion phase. Again, you know, I think we won't know until we get to July and we look more at the sales tax numbers and look at, get the final report on property taxes. But as Craig always says, I'm very optimistic. And I'm usually optimistic, and Jeremy, no offense, is sometimes pessimistic early on here and as any good financial person should be, though. The CFO is pessimistic and the politician is optimistic. But I am more optimistic that we can accomplish both of those, but obviously, time will tell on that. But again, with the caveat of the police, we have the fire issue that may come this year or in later years. You know, certainly my guidance would be to try to keep the mill levy flat or even lower it as we anticipate that.
Yeah, it's, in terms of the second part with the mill levy, I'd like to see more information on, you know, I think you gave us options last year in terms of keeping it flat or increase or decrease. That proved helpful, so I'd like to see those, something similar.
Yeah, obviously, the keeping it flat or lowering it would be optimal. But again, that's why they put us up here to make the hard decisions.
I'm just going to add, just to the compensation plan, I think my bias as being a former state employee and knowing that what happens when you try to play catch-up, it does put us at, you know, these are one of those things that it could put us at a deficit more than what we've climbed out of since the pandemic. And so while it may be hard to see that in a budget and others may try to justify lowering it, decreasing the amount of a step, when you're talking about bringing on, encouraging staff to be LEED certified or to aspire to leadership and things of that nature, you're sending a different message when you say, we value you being here, but we don't value you enough to pay you what you would need to survive and be sustained. So I think time will tell that we need to continue with this. And we may need to tighten the purse strings and other expenditures. As I stated, you know, this is not champagne taste. This is something that we need to be mindful of and forward in in our budgeting and recognizing the important place that it has. But we may need to take some, we may need to look at some of our department budgets in that capacity. As far as the mill levy, I shared this last year, and I'm going to continue. It's too early to make a decision on decreasing, let alone increasing, especially based on the conversation we had yesterday with the county about the future and potential of what that increase would look like if we wanted to do an expansion project for fire and medical. So I'd like to wait until we're closer to July to make a decision. I'm a little bit more pragmatic in this because we're going to start hearing it, and we've already been hearing it now in regards to the mill levy. And I think that gives us space and time to educate our community on how, all the things that we're doing and how that impacts, mill levy impacts our infrastructure. And again, what do we want Lawrence to be? And the cost of what it takes for that. And it is a hard pill to swallow, but that's what we get paid the big bucks to articulate to our constituents. So I don't know, are we going to talk about this long-term sustainability piece after this?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm good.
I just have one thing to add on the mill levy piece. So from what I see from the slides, you're looking at 8% on property tax possibly and 5% on sales tax. Now, last year, if I remember right, property taxes came in about 11% or 12%, which was really off the charts. So if something like that occurs again this year, then I definitely would like to take another look at the mill levy on that end of it, as well as how it mixes with everything else we're trying to do, obviously. Because I do think 8% is pretty reasonable, I think, given the rate of inflation, the CFP, everything that goes along with that. So I am definitely interested to look at the mill levy, but it depends on how our property taxes come in.
So Mayor, in preparation for that, can we have the finance team let us know if we're looking at doing a mill levy decrease, what that looks like as far as dollar amounts? I know we did it last year, it was like 1.2. But if we can get that updated number, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, so as the city does work towards long-term sustainability, there are several tools that we will be utilizing, including a priority-based budgeting, PBB, as well as Balancing Act, which is a public engagement platform. So priority-based budgeting, PBB, the city has started this journey several years ago. And the purpose of PBB is to get us away from line item budgeting and instead focusing on supporting, making budgetary decisions based on our based on our community needs and priorities. So PBB looks to answer three questions. What do we do? What does it cost? And why are we in the business? For questions one and two, what do we do and what does it cost? The city currently has about 100 PBB programs and the associated costs for running those programs. To get into question three, why are we in the business? That is answered through our program scoring that you see on the right-hand side here, where we evaluate each program in various areas to determine its alignment to the community's priorities. So out of those roughly 100 programs, they are broken up into two types, governance programs and community programs. There are 33 governance programs. Your governance programs are your more internal-facing programs, so HR and IT. And then your community programs, 65 community programs, are your more public-facing programs, your public safety perks and recreation. For scoring, we took those governance programs, those internal programs, and scored those against our commitments, our six commitments that you see. And then for our community programs, our public-facing programs, we scored those against the strategic plan outcome areas. All 100 programs are scored against what are called BPA, Basic Program Attributes. So last year, when the city went through its scoring exercise, it weighted all of its commitments and all of its outcome areas as a three. So they were equal weighting across the board. In regards to the BPAs, which we are required per our platform to score, we marked almost all of those, demand, population served, mandate, and reliance as zero, which means that they are not factored in to the final score at all. The only BPA that we did take slightly into account with a one is cost recovery. I believe that is because it was more tied to the commitment of sound fiscal stewardship. So rather than, like last year, where we focused on the actual programs and their scores, this year, we want to take that little bit higher level policy direction in regards to how these are weighted, and if there are any particular areas that you would like to see prioritized over others.
Well, I know strong welcoming neighborhoods encompasses, I think, our housing initiatives division and also CPRB. So I definitely think those are important. We're doing some ongoing work there, so that I would definitely like to keep those a priority.
On the weights that you have listed here, is this what they were last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm gonna throw in here while you guys are thinking, too, just to kind of, oh, could you put the screen back? Thanks. Just to kind of, the governance, community, and basic program attributes, I'll draw your attention to those. We, the basic program attributes are the ones that Resource X has everybody score against, okay? These are the ones you're going to find in all of their client cities. We have taken most of the values off of them, even though we need to go score those, because we wanted to center the strategic plan. And that's what the governance and community attributes do. It's a good thing, I think it was a good thing for us to do as a goal, starting out with this. We always want to center the strategic plan. My concern is when we're evaluating these, all of the commitment areas, which we would call governance, all of the programs we score are getting points for those. But most of the programs we score are only getting points on one of the community. So the outcome areas are getting devalued, if you will, relative to the other ones. It doesn't mean that they're not all important. We've already recognized that. Trying to say is, there's no, the programs get a lot more points in governance just because of design. And so one way to think about this, and one I'm favoring, kind of, as we're trying to prepare this, is reduce the governance down, those points down to maybe one each, and elevate the community ones, maybe up to five each, because none of them are going to get all five of the outcomes. Does that make sense to you? So I'm trying to get them both on the same relative weighting. If we, that's one way to do it.
So on a governance project that falls under that, only scored under one of the results, like equity and inclusion?
No. Our values that you've adopted are, everything has to go through all six of those lenses. So each program is getting a score, and it's gaining points relative to each other on all of those. But what's happening is, those that have really hit it hard on one of the governance ones or the commitments, the outcomes or what they're achieving in an outcome area are really low. They're not able to get as many points. So we're really just evaluating most of the programs disproportionately on the commitment scoring, which is important, but it's not favoring what I would call the results that you would see in outcomes.
So another way to say that is if we were scoring the, now I'm just drawing the blank, what do we measure every time?
The CIP.
Outcomes?
The outcomes, the measurements.
Oh, KPIs.
Yeah, the KPIs, those that we're measuring, if we were scoring based upon that, you know, that would be raising the community score. So how well are we hitting one of our strategic plan outcomes? The problem is, is that a particular program might have nothing to do with safe and secure, nothing to do with unmistakable identity, and it's only getting scored in the connected city category. And so it gets three points. But a governance program of, you know, an internal program, it gets one point for environmental sustainability, stewardship, equity inclusion, all of a sudden it's weighted higher. I'm with you there. Well, I definitely think we need to be focused on the outcomes of the strategic plan. Obviously, the commitments are important, we need to be measuring those. But I hear what you're saying is, you're suggesting maybe lowering the weight on the commitments in the governance section and raising so we can favor the outcomes of the strategic plan, which are under the community. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Because the outcomes are really only going to gain points for one.
One section.
Right. They're going to, all those others will be zero. So the weight factor won't apply.
Yeah.
And it's probably worth considering, too, Resource X might know what they're doing. I'm being sarcastic. They've built those other factors for a purpose, and so we might want to lean into those a little bit more and not zero out four of the five.
Well, yeah, I would, I like what you're saying there, like lowering the weight to one in the governance, five in the community. You know, I did have that question about mandate being a zero. It seems like if it's a mandate, it should be, give it the one. And then the other, I think, is population served. If I understand that to be, like, how many people use the program? Is that what it means by population served? And so again, I think that's an important one to consider. I'm not exactly sure what they mean by reliance, I guess, but.
Reliance is, is there anybody else in the community that could provide that service? Is the city the only entity capable of providing that?
I might leave that at zero. But I could see going population served and mandate as one, along with cost recovery. Community, the outcomes are five. And then governance, the commitment weights at one. I could see that being, giving us a betto outcome as we judge these.
So piggybacking on that, you said the population served is the number, the demand? Because we have a demand line there. But population served, that's not like marginalized communities or BIPOC?
Casey, do you want to?
The population served is a number of people that use the program. The demand is, is the demand for that service on the incline? Is it staying stable or is it declining? And I'm looking to Jeremy or Ally to correct me. That's my recollection of those two, without him in front of me.
Does that make sense, the difference?
So population served would be if?
10 people.
Who signed up?
100 people, 1,000 people.
The number.
Versus, was it 10 people last year and it's 12 people this year? Or was it 10 people last year and it's only going to be two people this year?
Got it. Got it.
Well, I think that's pretty important.
The demand?
Actually using the service or?
Yeah, I do, too. Mandate, that just makes me think of all the regulatory programs we have. Is that where that falls in? So that seems to me that that's a pretty important item. Because if you're mandated by law to do it...
Well, then you're going to do it anyway.
What? I didn't get that.
That's okay.
So, you know, it seems to me mandate would be pretty important to consider above a program that is not mandated, if we have to really get into cost issues, for me.
As well, I'm on board with lowering the number on governance and upping the number on community.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Anybody else?
With no adjustments to basic program attributes?
No, also, though.
Yeah.
Doing the ones.
Increase in mandate.
So is the drastic shift in weight value, the hope that we're going, that things, that we're going to get the true communities, PBB score? I mean, I understand what you were saying, but I'm just trying to understand why such a drastic jump between the two? Why are we, why take it from three to one for governance and up to five for community? I understood why. But is the hope that creating that variance in value, weight value, will give us, will elevate some of those projects a little bit more than what we saw this past year?
I don't know. I really, I was uncomfortable with this a little bit, but we're learning to use the system. So I was uncomfortable that, it just wasn't, it didn't seem
Right.
fair that you couldn't, the outcomes, and I'm thinking of the people, too. We've got champions for all of these. So I'm thinking, the poor outcome champions, where most of our budget is, they're not getting competitive programs as compared to the commitment champions because of that. Now, they're all intersecting, so in theory, it's all in the wash. But I just, that's the problem, I think, in our design. And remember, we made this part up. We said, Resource X, we want to focus the strategic plan. Can you make your system do what we want to do? And they said, yeah, here's how you could do it. And so I think this is an adjustment we should have made last year. I don't know that it'll have a dramatic effect, but you can see it could. And I think it's, this recommendation I'm making is to try and get it so that when we present, when I present the budget to you
Right.
of what the machine has spit out to some extent, that it's going to satisfy what the expectations of the community are and the things that we know. Because that's, I mean, that's ultimately what we'd love to have. Like, everybody agrees with the budget.
Yeah.
And it's making everybody happy. So I think this will do, get us closer to that. And then we're just going to do what we always do, and that's the human factor of listening and bringing some other factors in. We haven't gotten to Balancing Act yet, but I think that's another layer of a tool that'll help us get a lot closer to where the community's really asking us to provide services, and maybe they don't allow us to back off on services. And so I think this calibration thing, it's very abstract tonight, but I do think it can give us a better jumpstart on getting a budget that's much closer to what this community's hoping we do.
Anything else? Anybody wants to add on that?
If we were to add for demand, the thought would be if we were to increase that by one, remind me again what demand means in this context?
Service demand. So what is the demand for a particular program? Increasing or is it declining? Or is it remaining relatively stable?
So by having that as a zero on, I feel like having that as a zero would create a false positive for demand in something. And so we could be potentially funding something that has no demand, that, that score could then be, I mean, because we went back and forth between the PBB scores and the CIP scores, and knowing, and I'm just thinking about, can I ask this question when we have Resource X here, about is there potentials for false positives? And I think by zeroing out demand, something could score at, could create a score that has a false positive, that we end up funding something that, from the politics side, is the emotional piece, but from, from the, as far as it's use and purpose and budget, it may not be there. And I know that sounds hurtful, and I doesn't mean to, but it is what it is. So I don't, but I don't know if, would adding a one to that, again, to your point, create that surf, you know, create that exposure that we need to, to the scoring. I think the weights do need to be changed based on what we went through last year, that we can do a comparative analysis, and maybe we can see things, we can, we would have that comparison to look at, and see if our opinions around those particular projects that are still on the CIP, if it's changed because of that. Yeah, just go, but I'm just, that demand, I don't know if I want that to stay at zero. And again, it's because I'm not, it's very abstract. But my hypothesis is that that could give us, that would be another piece to this puzzle that once went through the computer and calculated that it would give us a more robust discussion around projects and how, which projects to fund. So I'm not opposed to adjusting the governance and community piece, based on the hypothesis that I think it's going to give us a more, I don't want to say accurate, but a more robust picture. And I think, but I think adding a one to that, to demand may give us, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's not a one, maybe it's a point five. I don't know if we can do point fives. I don't know. I think there's something there. I just don't know, because I don't live in this world. But I feel like there's something of value to put something in demand that will tell us, that will give us an interpretation that we need when it comes to addressing the budget.
Agreed.
Sorry, I'm not a statistic. I barely pass statistics proudly with a C+, but I know something in there. I just don't, I'm not doing a very good job of articulating it right now. And it's pretty toasty in here to me, so.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but one thing that I think Resource X would have shared if they were here was, keep in mind that there are multiple scoring criterias.
Yeah.
So because something doesn't get a particular set of points in one category or the other, the likelihood that it would tip the scales to a decision might be less because it's one of multiple criteria than. So again, I don't know if that's helpful, but... So again, I don't know if that's helpful, but as you were talking, it made me think of that.
I just feel like I need some more demo time to, just demo it before we get it out, but.
Yeah, I, I just, it's a good, good time to say that there's lots of factors like she's saying that will limit extreme swings.
Right.
This also is using last year's data, which is the best we have. But it's giving, it's 100, 105 programs. So it's across all of those. But I also want to say it's, this is science and art. So there's still going to be the factor of the policymaking. So we will get some, some guidance from this is how the program scored and this is how Balancing Act, how people in the community scored it. And we're still going to use common sense and listening and make some adjustments to what it spits out. It's, I don't, I don't want the public to come in and start engaging with us and say, it's a scientific thing. It spit out this and that's what the right answer is. That's not what we're talking about, but these are better guides than what we have, which, when we have nothing. It was just three minutes at the microphone at the end of the process. So we will have a lot more robust analysis and guidance.
So when I think of demand, I think of Parks and Rec programs where they have classes. And it's my understanding, at least a couple of classes I've tried to take, if they don't have a certain number of people sign up, they don't do the class. Is that correct?
Right. Make, making the class, they call it.
So that's, I think some of that could, there's some cushion there to, to help with that demand.
There is. I, we'll pick on the library as an example because a librarian a long time ago told me this, like, they don't just buy all bestsellers. So that would be demand. We're going to, that would say, yes, okay, everybody wants this book and, but they're going to have to, they need to have other books too.
Yeah, got it. Any other thoughts on that? Is that enough direction?
I think that's very helpful. So we'll take this and kind of, you're going to see probably we'll go to ones on the governance and probably three, or I mean, probably five on community. And then we will probably put a one by all of the others. The basic program attributes. Unless you're uncomfortable with us, I think said maybe not on demand, zero demand.
Oh, keep demand.
Reliance.
So those will all be ones.
Even reliance.
The governance will all be ones, the community will be fives, because they can only really play in one of those five.
Okay.
And that should balance between the three. So you get a bout, more of a balance between those three attributes.
Got it.
Okay. If I'm to see where they chose.
Thank you. Absolutely right.
Okay.
Okay.
Ally?
So in addition to the feedback on current weighting, we did provide the list of 100 PBB programs to you in the agenda packet. Just wanted to ask very high level, you know, if there were any specific programs you wanted to see prioritized from that list? Or any areas or services where we should take a closer look at for savings?
Any thoughts on that?
Question kind of related to that and I think what you're going to talk about next, which is getting involved Balancing Act. I got on that today. And some of them are locked. Are they, are some of them going to remain locked or, or eventually all of them going to be unlocked or all of them? What's the plan on that?
Yeah, so what you see now is, is our live version. So they will stay locked.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if I, if there was one program, I, some of those programs, if I wanted to say, hey, let's lower that, I couldn't lower that. Because it's locked, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking.
Anything on that one, on that?
As far as what programs to prioritize?
To prioritize and or take a look at for savings.
And if I'm, we're happy to come back with the updated weighting as well, see what those scores show.
Yeah.
Kind of hate to interfere when we haven't seen that go through.
Yeah.
You'd hate to what?
I hate to interfere when I haven't seen it.
Right.
Go through.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, because I was like, I can.
Don't get me wrong.
I mean, I, I had a list ready to go, but I mean, if you're going to give me numbers.
If it doesn't go well, we'll be critical of it. But also I don't know if I should inter, we should be interfering at this point.
I will hold my cards. I will check. Although I'm not a good poker player. Check.
So the next time you come back to us, you will have some scores. Is that what I understand?
Yes, with these updated weighting.
Okay. Because I had some, some ideas, but you're right, kind of like to see some scores.
That's fair.
So we will move on to our Balancing Act, which is a public engagement software. Very excited to be rolling that out this year. And I was going to attempt to provide a demonstration here. So if you go to our website, LawrenceChaos.org, Community Engagement.
Ally, the screen didn't switch.
Oh.
I don't know if you wanted it to or not, but.
I did. New share maybe?
Yeah, kill the share now.
This one? Okay. So I'm actually going to go back just so everybody can follow along. LawrenceKansas.org, our, our website, Community Engagement here at the top. We're going to go to Budget Engagement. And here you will see a link to Balancing Act. Going to log on, you get some instructions here at the beginning. This is using our 2023 adopted budget. And it asks, are you a resident? You can say yes or no. This is a required question. Input your zip code. And so you can stop there if you want, or if you would like to more accurately show where you live. This pin does toggle around. You can manipulate that to better show your neighborhood.
Yeah, because that was really off.
And then you will continue. So this again is our 2023 adopted budget, specifically our general fund. And we'll be using this data to inform the 2024 priorities. So as you can see, what we are starting in, we are in a balanced budget with our spending. We have PBB programs based on their strategic plan outcome area. So our first one, Safe and Secure, for $62.8 million. And the first PBB program under Safe and Secure is Fire Medical Operations. And it asks the question, should funding and service levels for this item be changed? So you can increase the service level five. You can maintain at a current service level, decrease to a three, a two, or a one. And you'll say, Ally, I don't know what each service level means. And I'll say, that is a great question, and that's why we have this icon here where we develop these rubrics. So Fire Medical Operation is identified as currently a service level four. Full-time paid, full-time paid operations staff, advanced life support, medical transfer, less than eight-minute response time, full 24/7 in-service fleet. You can see what would entail for a service level five. And you can also see if you were to decrease the service levels to a three, to a two, to a one. So this Phoenix logo here indicates the current service level that we have identified. And that is specific to each PBB program. So I review this and I decide, you know what? I think Fire Medical Operations can actually be decreased to a service level three. You can see that we have an associated cost right here of $1.3 million. And that gives us a surplus of $1.3 million at the top. So I could potentially lower taxes if I so choose with that $1.3 million. Or I could increase service levels in other areas, again, to find that right balance. My very important caveat to this whole thing that I cannot emphasize enough is that we utilize flat 5% increments to move from one service level to another. So I cannot tell you for a fact that if we add $1.3 million to Fire Medical Operations, that they will be able to go to a service level four, from a service level four to a service level five. We unfortunately are not that advanced yet. I think we can get there with time. But in absence of that, we created just a 5% flat increment. So again, the point of the exercise is not really to focus on the $1.3 million, not to focus on that increment. It is to show that there are costs associated with increasing that services, just like there are consequences to reducing those service levels as well. So you can go through each general fund, PBB program, maintain, increase, or decrease as you see fit until you are able to balance the budget. On the revenue side, again, a majority of these are locked except for property tax, where you can say, I want to go in and increase every PBB program by one service level. It's obviously going to have a high cost associated with it. And so I will have to continue to add property tax until I am able to get out of the deficit.
Does that show that, does that convert that to mill levy?
No, it is in, I believe, 1% increments right now.
On the service level part, I was curious if, if you go down too far, is there like a dialogue box that pops up? And, you know, gives you like the consequences of those actions?
Sunfire?
Yeah.
No, like SimCity.
Yeah.
Not yet, not yet.
Yeah. Some hairy situations out.
Right. Yeah, we would. It would be very nice to be able to develop that in absence of that. We do have what we have estimated a service level one would pertain to.
Volunteer power department.
Right. Well, yeah, whereas you, you know, you go below a certain like, like you go below three, all of a sudden you get dialogue box.
I do think the rubric, the language we tried to develop in these, and we did this relatively rapidly. I mean, this was done over the last three or four months. And that's, there's probably less than that, but, and there's 105 of these. So we are, we did try and talk about not consequences, but this is what it'll look like. This is, this is, this is how it'll feel in each of these levels. Which is why we also couldn't develop a, how much, we would have had to develop five budgets.
Right.
Would have been the actual cost of moving these. So I think 5% really still will give us a great simulation of what the community is valuing and what they'd be willing to live without. But it does force a balanced budget.
Yes.
In the sim, each simulation, so.
And then afterwards, is there like a report you can pull and like kind of see like where people are falling in terms of?
I haven't seen the analytics. I understand that they're pretty robust.
Yes. And as Craig noted, you are not able to submit the exercise unless you are balanced or in a surplus. At the bottom, you are able to insert any suggestions. And then here is your submit button at the bottom. So again, we are, we're very excited, not, not perfect, but we do believe it'll be an effective tool to gain some insights on where the community would like to see increased investment, as well as where they could potentially live with lower levels of service in any particular area. Any questions on this?
Any questions? Nope.
Very cool.
Yes, I'm excited to try it out. I am.
And just to, to close our budget calendar, moving forward tonight, our, our policy guidance, June 15th is when we will have that final assessed valuation from Douglas County. See us in June for the recommended capital improvement plan. And then July 11th, our city manager's FY 2024 recommended budget. And that's really all I have this evening.
Any more questions for Ally or Jeremy? If not, we can go to public comment.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I would just like to start off by saying I think we could be cutting the police budget some, specifically get rid of, rid of the drug dogs. I've advocated for that before. Also, when it comes to wages, I think we should put more emphasis on our lowest paid employees and not on our top paid employees. Like when we're talking about market competitiveness, let's talk about city manager salary. I'm looking at open payrolls and the average salary for a city manager is $174,000. Yet our current city manager makes over $200,000. So if we have a city manager that's currently making over $25,000 over the average city manager price, does he really need a raise? It's just something to keep track of. And when we talk about what like, I mean, I, I'm not against anyone here, but let's, let's really look at some of the performance we've gotten from our top level officials this year. Was the Prairie Park herbicide, was that, was that good leadership? Like, what about the, what's gone on with the homeless camp this year and making Jen a scapegoat? I don't think that was, you know, raise worthy. And let's talk about tonight. Earlier, the mayor went and let Steve Watts comment on a, on a proclamation. And she said that, she used the reason that because it was on the agenda. Yet if you look at public comment, it says, public is allowed to speak on issues that are not scheduled for discussion. And proclamations are not scheduled for discussion. Yet no one here that works for the city stopped, you know, corrected the mayor. So why, why was, why didn't that happen? Because it clearly states that the public are allowed to make, allowed to speak on issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Oh yeah, when it comes to the Balance Act, are we keeping track of the stats of people taking it? Because what if the only ones doing this are like retired senior citizens? Like, do you think that's fair to the rest of the city? If we only have, if, you know, like not all the demographics are taking part in, in the Balance Act? Because I don't think a lot, I mean, look at, look at college students. They're not taking part in any elections. I don't think they're going to be taking part in this. So it's just something to keep track, you know, keep in mind. Thank you.
Any other public comment from the audience tonight? If not, go to Zoom?
Michael Allman?
You're on mute. Ooh, Michael, we're having trouble hearing your audio.
That's weird.
Yeah. It's sort of a high pitched squealing sound.
That is strange.
Not any better. We'll. I think we did. Maybe he's going to log out and log back in.
He's going to what?
Maybe he's going to log out and log back in. Sometimes people do that. Watch for him.
We lost him. He's trying to.
He's in.
Go ahead, Michael.
That is weird.
Poor Michael. Can't hear you, Michael.
No idea.
I wonder if it's his headphones.
Did you receive your?
Yeah.
Your public correspondence, at least, Michael, but.
See what you're written across. I don't think that's going to work this way.
Can't hear you, Michael.
You'll have other chances, Michael, other chances.
Oh. Nope. Michael, sorry about that, we're not getting through. If you can get through before we get done tonight, which we're close. But in that regard, I think we'll go on for now, see if he can fix that, okay?
That was the only public comment, Mayor.
That was it. Okay, bring it back to the commission, any other discussion on this item? Staff have enough direction?
Yeah, that's a great start, thank you.
Good start, okay. Go on to item I, commission items. Any commission items?
Um, I have one commission item. I know that with the Kansas Legislature, I know there was a passing of SB 180, and I would just like for our city attorneys to take a look at if, once that goes into effect July 1, if there's any impact on our, our Chapter 10 as it relates to protections for gender identity, because there is some language that kind of gets in there with municipality in collecting of data, and I don't, I'm just, I'm not a lawyer, but I just feel like there may be some concerns there with that.
We have, we have looked at that bill and don't think it has any impacts on city operations, but, you know, we will look at it and can provide something.
This, I know the last piece with the data collection, I just had some concerns there, and I, it might be good for us to, from whether it's a human relations or, I think if, well, if it's under human relations, to perhaps do some education around that. I know when we had the Safe and Welcoming Bill from last year, and we, us going through that process, you know, it was very tough and contentious. I think there was an education opportunity there between the community and the city to kind of show what that looks like as far as interpretation of, of codes here locally, and I would just like to see if one of our board, you know, whether it's human relations or whatnot, we can do some work around that to remind and educate our community around protected classes, specifically as it relates to SB 180.
Michael Alman is back. Do you have anything else? Just see if he can, see if we can hear him. Michael?
Okay, can you give this a try?
It works.
Yes, Michael.
It's working? I don't know, I just had it log off. Ah, okay, so, we have two agenda reports on the agenda tonight. Briefly, the first one is requesting urban food growers get water utility assistance. If you read that in the agenda report, that's enough to say. The other one, I want to talk at length. If Lawrence is ever going to have an all ages and abilities and safe bicycle transportation system, the city will need focus and commitment. To do this, the most effective and highest priority is to hire a full-time bicycle transportation coordinator. Such a position, as you know, is how you have successfully advanced key programs and policies, such as coordinators for affordable housing, sustainability, equity and inclusion, and communications. As you have seen from reading our agenda report, Lawrence has 47 years of bicycle plans, policies, studies, design criteria, and funding matrices, but little to show on the ground for that. The white-stripe bicycle lanes are shunned by most potential family-level cyclists, and many miles of our shared-use paths are recreation paths that don't connect destinations, for example, the Lawrence Loop or the, or the DeVictor Park Loop. Everyone points to Portland, Oregon as the country's best bicycle transportation city, rated at the platinum level. Lawrence is still at bronze. How did Portland do that? They hired Mia Burke as a bicycle transportation coordinator. In 10 years' time, in the 1990s, Ms. Burke transformed Portland's for bicycle transportation. She now is the CEO of Ulta Planning, a leading multimodal design consultant. While Lawrence also needs to devote equitable bicycle transportation funding at a level at least 10% of overall transportation spending, the key to effective and focused implementation is a bicycle transportation coordinator. At this point, no one at city staff pulls together a bicycle transportation focus. Each is functionally isolated, the city engineer, MSO program managers, parks and rec, and the MPO itself. And then the Multimodal Transportation Commission reviews things only on occasion and only at a higher level. Under the strategic plan, bicycle transportation is a connected city issue and a sustainability city issue, but it is even more than that. For citizens, it is a safe and secure issue and an equity issue. We need a complete bikeway system distinct from motorways for all ages and abilities bicyclists to safely get to their desired destinations. Adequate funding that is focused by a bicycle.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate your comments, thank you.
Achieve that, thank you.
So we will go back to.
Mayor, I'm sorry, there was, there's somebody else that is.
Did we miss them the first time?
Yeah.
No, no, can you hear me?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, my name is Bill Steele, I live here in Lawrence. I, I just want to quickly amplify what Michael said about the need to hire a full-time bicycle transportation coordinator. You know, if you go to many communities of our size around the country, you'll notice that our city is really far behind when it comes to bicycle infrastructure. I mean, just insanely far behind. Other places have been doing this for years, and, and we're playing catch-up to, to a degree that's somewhat maddening for the reasons, some of the reasons that, you know, Michael pointed out in his recommendations. But, you know, we don't have to look that far for inspiration, you know, we don't have to look at just Portland, Oregon. We can look much closer to home for inspiration, you know, to make things much more multimodal in the city. For example, I don't know if you guys are aware, Kansas City has really gone from nothing to protected bike lanes going up in many areas of the city in just the last few years. And they, they pretty much skipped a step along the way to doing that. They wound up basically just not striping anything and now going directly to protected bike facilities. I think in the last two years, they built like 30 miles of protected bike lanes, and their goal is to build 15 miles every year. And, and they've got, I think it's, it's called a Vision Zero Program to basically reduce traffic fatalities and deaths to zero, you know, within a certain period of time as well. And yes, they've had the inevitable pushback and opposition to protect the bike lanes, but they still managed to find a way to do it. And I think that the two key things that they've been able to do, the two main reasons why they, how they've been able to do that is number one, they have the political will to do it, and number two, they've hired transportation mobility officers or bicycle transportation coordinators like Michael has suggested that we hire, to really focus on that, and it's been very successful. So I, I think if the city is really serious about having a multimodal transportation network and meeting the climate and, you know, equity and inclusion goals and plans that have been approved by, approved in the past by this commission, then we need to, we need to hire a full-time bicycle transportation coordinator within the MSO. So I just hope that, I hope that this will be a budget priority going forward for the city. I think the longer that we wait to do this, the more opportunities we're, we're going to have to miss making this a safer, more multimodal town and, and catch up with what our peers are doing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we'll go back to commission items, any other commission items? Not, we'll go to the city manager's report?
Three items on there, the one I'll highlight is, we will have an open house coming up on June 10th for Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical at the 19th and Haskell Training Center. So this is kind of the first time we've done that in a while, maybe, or maybe ever. So very excited to see the community out there, and you all too.
I did want to mention something on commission items I forgot about, and that's the information that Daniel Lastman brought to the commission tonight during public comment. If we could make sure that that gets to staff to look at what it's about, okay?
I appreciate it.
You were talking about the petition with the signatures?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I haven't read it, so I don't know. Okay, any questions for Craig on the city manager's report? Nope. Now we'll open it up to public comment on the city manager's report. Any public comment? Nope. Any public comment online?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go into calendar items, anything on the calendar we need to highlight?
We did cancel the June 13th meeting, didn't we?
We did tonight.
Just tonight.
So then we'll remove it for.
Just as thinking.
Since you're not going to take us to the league. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Anything else on the calendar? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, aye opposed, passes, five to nothing.
Even Amber voted for it tonight.